This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
I'd like to call the Monday, May 15, 2017, Eau Claire Board of Education meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you for doing that for us. Would you roll call for verification of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Duhax?
Here.
Commissioner Fager?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Mu is absent. Commissioner Torres?
Here.
I'd like to welcome our newest board member tonight, Dr. Eric Torres. So, thank you. And Charles is on the road, and he didn't make it back in time for our meeting tonight, so we will miss him as well. That takes us to our public forum. I wanted to also thank everybody for being here before we go to the public forum. I know it's taking time out of your life to participate in a school board meeting, but our meetings are very important, and we enjoy having you all here, and also those that participate on the web. We use Board Docs, which makes what we do here available to anybody who can get on the Internet and listen to us, so that's good. I also want to thank Laura Brooks and her Culinary Arts Program for our cookies. They are over there, so make sure you have one. They help everybody kind of stay on task. So, if you get a little antsy, go over and get a cookie, and that will help you. So, public forum. We allow people to come at the beginning of every board meeting and talk to their board, and you have up to four minutes to address the board. We don't allow any comments about other people or things that would impede that way, but please say your name and address, and we look forward to listening from you, and we have several on tonight. Our first one is Darren Kinsler. Are you in the audience, please, Darren? Thank you.
My name is Darren Kinsler.
You can go on the -- yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to sit and tell you what to do. Turn on that little mic and the light. It's on, so you can just speak in there. The reason we make you stand there is so that when we videotape it, people at home can hear you too, so thanks.
My name is Darren Kinsler. I live at 5210 West Folsom Street. First, I just want to say thank you for all the work you guys do for our school districts. But I do have one question concerning the boundary changes that, at some point, doesn't have to be tonight, I would like and hope for clarification on. According to what I have read so far, the -- if you have a child that has already started at a school, your -- the siblings will also be grandfathered into that school as well. My question is, and my wife and I are wondering, if our first child graduates from that school, we have a break, and the boundaries change, will the second child be grandfathered in as well, or will they fall under the new boundary changes? So, just at some point, I'd like clarification if I may. Thank you.
Thank you, and you bringing it up now, it could be clarified later when they present, so thank you. The next person on the list is Bob Crone.
So, my name is Bob Crone, 2738 Genie Lane. I'd like to thank the board for their willingness to consider a boundary change, to better balance the enrollment numbers between the two high schools, to ensure that all students are provided equitable academic and extracurricular opportunities regardless of which high school they attend. I'm not sure how anyone in our community could argue for anything other than that, to be quite honest. My first exposed -- direct exposure to the equity problem was in 2011, when my oldest child wanted to take an Accounting III class his senior year at North High. We were told that this would not be possible because Accounting III was not going to be run at North. I later learned that this Accounting III did run at Memorial, and I, in fact, knew several students that took that class at Memorial. So, confused by this, I dug into things, and I learned very quickly that our district had significant equity issues that were real, not just perceptions, but real. In 2011, there were 41 classes that were either not offered or did not run at North due to not enough enrollment, but they did run at Memorial. Accounting III was one of those classes. So, the more I dug into things, the more alarming examples of inequity I found, and I'm not going to go through all of those right here, but one example that did hit the press was how astonished Bruce Herring was when he moved from Memorial to North as the band director and saw firsthand the poor condition and quality of the instruments and equipment at North versus Memorial. But another thing he also noted that was a challenge, he said that it was -- there was another challenge due to the fact that the number of students in the North Band Program was about half that of Memorial. So, here again is another example where the discrepancy in the number of students was having a negative impact. And I actually think Mr. Herring summed things up very nicely when he was quoted in a Leader Telegram article recalling what he told District Administration. He said, and I quote, "I don't care why it's different. I just know it's not right that one school would have so much more than another school in the same town," end of quote. Now, I know that Dr. Hardabek, since joining our district, has been pushing hard for better equity, and I thank her for that. I also know that the principals at both high schools have done a lot of work together in pursuit of equity, and those principals should also be commended for their work. But the fact is, there's only so much that can be done without better balancing the enrollment numbers between the two schools and the FTEs that are attached to that. And there's also the fear that any progress that has been made to date could quickly disappear, especially over the long term, if the enrollment numbers are not balanced. In 2002 -- 2012, the Applied Populations Laboratory from UW-Madison projected the enrollment imbalance between North and Memorial would hit 374 students in 2018. Well, guess what? We surpassed that discrepancy three years early with a difference of 400 students in the 2015-16 school year. The point is, the problem's getting worse, not better, and we haven't done anything about it. Now, that 400 number is significantly different from what I heard at a Demographic Trends meeting I attended on May 13 of 2013, where a high-level administrator stated that the difference in enrollment between North and Memorial is 345 students. However, over the next four years, the difference will be approximately 271, and eventually a difference of 134. And that's noted in the minutes from that meeting, which I have. Nothing could have been farther from the truth. It's not a difference of 134, or even 271. We're sitting here at 400, just the number that the ALP data told us it was going to be. So, in closing, I urge you to approve the proposed boundary changes at the proposed timeline, and then make sure to remain disciplined regarding inter-district transfers in order to make sure that the boundary change is allowed to have the desired effect on equity. There is significant support for this change. The district, the community, and most importantly, kids in this district are counting on you to take action in pursuit of equity for all students regardless of which high school they attend. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on our list is Joel Robidek. Did I say that right?
It's Joel Robidek.
Robidek, I'm sorry.
Long night.
Joel Robidek, welcome.
Hey. My name is Joel Robidek. I live at 2202 Winsong Court on the southwest side of Eau Claire. I also would like to comment on the Demographics and Trends Facilities Planning Committee report that's coming out tonight, and the previous speaker did make some points about the need for this, and I teach at Memorial High School. I am aware of those needs, okay? However, when I look at some of the things that committee's proposing, I see some things, especially with their guiding principles, that aren't actually addressed very well, one being the socioeconomic makeup of the building. I don't think you're making that equitable. It's still going to be there. That's not really changing. And then, one of their guiding principles was transportation time and cost, okay? I know personally where I live, my kids are about 4.2 miles from Memorial High School. Google Maps told me that. If I go to North High School, it's 7.2. I don't believe it's going to get cheaper to add three miles to their commute. So, those are the two things that bothered me about what they're presenting tonight that I think didn't really fit with their guiding principles. I don't want to focus on the rationale. What I want to focus on, though, is what I think's being left out, and that's the people that live in the affected area, okay? Nothing's really being said about those people, okay? So, a couple of things I wanted to just make a point of, okay? First of all, as citizens, when we purchase a home, you spend $100,000 to maybe $300,000 on a home, that's the biggest investment you might make in your life. When you make that investment, you think about some things. 15 years ago, when my wife and I made the decision to live where we live, one of the things was, where are our kids going to go to school? Okay? We knew they were going to go to Memorial High School, and that's always kind of been in the back of our minds for the last 15 years. So, we made that decision with that in the back of our minds, and that was important to our decision, okay? Not always important for everyone, but for us, very important, okay? So, that's not just me. I think a lot of people make those decisions with that in mind. I mentioned the proximity thing. I think it's a little crazy to have kids go three miles further to school. If you can avoid that, I think it's a good thing to avoid. I think that's something that should be a focus as well. And the last thing is, I think right now, you're kind of pulling the rug out of your middle school kids. My son is 12, my oldest. He's two years from the high school. He's excited to be an old ape. Nothing against North. North's a great school. Those are my colleagues. They do a nice job, but he wants to be an old ape. He's thought that his whole life. I'm not one that pounds it into his head and gets him all jacked up. He does it on his own. He goes to their activities. He goes to their football games, basketball games. He's involved with American League Baseball, which is aligned to Memorial. He's in the Hoops Club, which also aligns toward Memorial. He's got that in his head, and he wants to go there. It's important to him, but I'm not alone. A lot of people in our community, their kids, have that in mind. They want to do that, all right? What I'm asking is, we give choices, all right? I know there's disparity. It's got to be dealt with, but let's do it smart, okay? You're going to pull the rug out from a middle school kid and say, "Oh, guess you're going to a different school." Sorry about those plans. I think it's important to honor the decisions that home builders -- or, excuse me, homebuyers have made, honor decisions of those younger kids. I think that's real important for them, okay? So, I suggest a compromise somehow, maybe give choices to those who have school-age kids in the affected area, okay? You can choose either Memorial or North, as long as you have kids at the enacted date, okay? At the least, I think you should open up to the middle school kids. I think they should at least have some say, okay, some choice, because I think it's a little unfair for them. Closing, the last thing I wanted to say is a little quote I got from the Housing and Urban Development ad earlier this year on there. They wrote, "A zip code should not determine a child's future," and I know that can be taken a lot of different ways, and part of fixing the disparity is to assign that, but I think giving people choices would also help that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all those that came up during our public forum. We appreciate that. This takes us onto our Board Administration reports, and Superintendent Hardabek, you're up first.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Starting on May 17 at 11:30 a.m. in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee. On May 23 at 1:30 p.m. in the Administration Building, there will be another meeting of the Budget Development Committee. On May 24 at 5:00 p.m., there will be a celebration of service banquet for our retirees, and that will begin at 5:00 p.m. in the Florian Gardens. On May 31 at 11:30 a.m., there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will be held at the Administration Building. And on June 5, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, which will be followed later that evening by a meeting of the school board, and another meeting of the Budget Development Committee will take place on June 7. So, lots of meetings for the Budget Development Committee at that time of year. So, tonight, we have some very exciting recognitions, and the first recognition that we have is for our Special Olympics Basketball Team Champions Yellow. They're sitting there on, I think, in the first row. If you'd like to stand up, please. They placed first in Division VII at the Special Olympics State Tournament in April at UW-Oshkosh. There were over 600 Special Olympians who participated in the 41st Annual Tournament, and they participated in 14 divisions. The champions, yellow team, includes students from North, Memorial, and Altoona, and we're able to recognize those students tonight. So, from Memorial, we have Belle Brown. Where's Belle? There you are. Antonio Courtney? Antonio's? No? Not here, okay. Pablo Otto Garcia? There he is. Kyle Pikeert? There he is, yeah. And Hunter, is it Rustad? Rustad, okay. There you go. And from North, we have Chris Grabett. Is Chris here?
Yeah.
Hi, Chris. And Katie Grabett, okay? And from Altoona, we have Hunter Moore. Is Hunter with us tonight?
No.
Okay. So, assisting this team were Coach Beth Yoon. Beth, or Fanda Beth. Coach Tyler Smith. And volunteer coach Megan Watts. Is Megan with us? Okay. Well, thank you. We're so proud of you.
Four of you are preschoolers with me, so it's fun to see you all grown up. Sorry, makes me feel old, but I'm so proud of you.
That is, it gives you off to a strong start, it does. This spring, the UWEC Service for Learning Center recognized the Eau Claire School Library Friends with the 2017 Service Learning Excellence Award. Now, in their 10th year, the School Library Friends have trained and worked alongside UWEC student volunteers in a green initiative that repurposes obsolete and donated educational materials, using the proceeds to support Eau Claire's school library programs and to provide literacy support to various local charities. None of this would be possible without the excellent work of dedicated community volunteers and outstanding UWEC service learning students. And Stan Nesbit, where are you, Stan?
April.
Is here tonight on behalf of the Library Friends. So, congratulations to the friends, and congratulations to you, Stan. Bev Pearson, where are you? There she is, okay. So, Bev has been accepted to another Teacher Professional Development Workshop this summer in Annapolis, Maryland. It is called the Murray Project: Exploring the Physical Foundations of Oceanography. It is through the AMS, the American Meteorological Society, can't quite get that one out, US Naval Academy, and the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration. A select number of teachers from around the country were chosen through an application process, and our very own Bev Pearson is one of them who will partake in this, what I understand is very intense 12 days of training. So, all of her expenses are covered, and Bev will return with curricular materials to share with the district. This is an awesome adventure, Bev, so congratulations. I just have one more, which is great. It's great to be able to recognize all this wonderful work. CVTC is pleased to announce that North and Memorial High Schools were recognized with one of CVTC's Dual Credit Partnership Awards. The Partnership Award recognizes high school partners who show the strongest efforts toward growing and maintaining a variety of dual credit options and opportunities for their students, including transcribed credit, youth options, and high school academies. North and Memorial High Schools were also recognized by CVTC for their commitment to transcribed credit, and they received the Gold Award for having five or more transcribed credit courses in 2016 and 2017. And a special congratulations goes out to the two principals, Trevor Colap and Dave Valk, and also, there they are in the back, also to Jim Schmidt and Dave Oldenburg for their work kind of behind the scenes, getting this program off the ground. It's a very exciting opportunity for our students, and it really speaks to our initiative to make sure that each of our students in high school has some type of post-secondary experience before they graduate from high school. So, thank you, and congratulations.
That concludes our superintendent's report. The next report is mine, the board's president's report, and I'll try to make this as brief as I can. I just want board members to be aware that at our next meeting, June 5, this picture taking time, so I checked with Charles tonight through text messages. He will be here. Are we all planning to be at the next meeting? So, we're good to go, Patty, all right? The next thing is the FFA banquet on May 25. I cannot attend because I will be away in Cleveland taking care of my granddaughter, Harper. I haven't seen her in a while, and I've promised over a year that I would do that. So, I do believe that all board members did get invites in the mail, so I'm going to leave that up to the rest of the board. I sent my great regrets today. I also, as part of the Poverty Summit, am part of a access committee and to resources, and the part that we pulled out to work on as a committee is access to transportation because, in mapping out what we were looking at for access, transportation came out as being the most difficult piece, and I think that has been hanging out there in our community for a very long time. And I, we all as committee members, did one-on-ones out in the community, and I said I would pick Jim Fai with Student Transit as my one-on-one. And I had an amazing informational session with Jim, but when it concluded, I have something to share with the board in case you would like to participate. Jim shared with me when we were done that Student Transit was helping to do a benefit for Carrie Lance's daughter. And as many of you know, Carrie was a longtime bus driver for our district children and was murdered as part of a murder-suicide incident a bit ago in our community. This really rocked all of those that work so closely with Carrie at Student Transit. The benefit is on Saturday, June 3, from 6:00 to 10:00 at Wildridge Golf Course. I will give the information to Superintendent Hardabek to include in this week's packet mailing to the board. So, this is a pretty cool benefit because what they're doing is they're doing the benefit for Carrie's teenage daughter's future education. So, you can also do that donation at RCU if you feel so inclined, okay? This Thursday, May 18, from 5:30 to 7:00, right here at 500 Main, a community group that Joe and I are part of is showing the final episodes of Raising of America, okay? We started out by showing the Signature Hour, which was an hour-long video about the science, about when parents are stressed, when babies pay the price for this stress that is put on families, and that's why improving conditions for families with young children is one of the best investments any nation can make. We did present that to the community in five different places. So, we've also shared Episode 2 and 3 here. Episode 2 was "Once Upon a Time When Childcare for All Wasn't Just a Fairy Tale." That was the episode that talked about the politics of childcare and medical, Family Medical Leave Act. All of these are available, too, for people to watch. Episode 3, which we did here as well, was "Are We Crazy About Our Kids?", which went into depth about investing in high-quality care and education. This Thursday, here at the Board Office, we are going to be showing Episodes 4 and 5, which will conclude the series of Raising of America. You can get on the Internet and look it up, too, if you want to. Episodes 4 and 5 are "Wounded Places: Confronting Childhood PTSD in America's Shell-Shock Cities", and the other piece we will be showing is "DNA is Not Destiny: How Outside Gets Under the Skin." It's how do our social environments, nurturing, toxic, and between alter the epigenetic dimmer switches that turn on our genes, turn their genes on and off? It's fascinating research that we have now that allows us to really be definitive in what we're looking at with kids and families. So, that's this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 here at the Board Office. There'll be signs telling you where to go, okay? Joe and I are available, too, if anybody wants to get a hold of the series and if you would like to share it in other places within the community. Also, I do believe that there's an opportunity on our Open Community Connection Google Doc, and I think we talked about that at our closed session, so I guess I don't have to spend much time on that. That's that really early one. Mary Ann's already set to go, so hopefully somebody will go with her. And then, I really want to end my report tonight by thanking Demo Trends and the Equity Committee members and our board members that work so hard on those committees for their hard work and dedication to the Eau Claire School District. Public service is a calling that not all step into, so I want you all to know that the Eau Claire School District is as strong as the staff and community commitment is to serve us. It helps us to hold ourselves to a high level of discussion, deliberate dialogue, and those in the audience tonight and those listening, in order for us to have, it allows us to have agreement and discourse with understanding, and I think that's really important. All those in the audience tonight and those listening, or those that have written to the board, need to know that we, as a board, are extremely thankful for the committee input and do not take the decisions eventually made very lightly at all. I say again, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and those of the boards, for your amazing help, your insight, and your information. And that concludes my president's report. And that takes us on to our Student Representative Reports, but I don't want them to report yet. Oh, wait a minute, before I go on, Dr. Hardabek II Board sent out the information about Project Search. I know that you have all the information, but I wanted you to also have exactly what it is. So, I made this out for our last meeting, and then I forgot to hand it out, so I'm going to give you that, too. And then, that will really end my president's report, and I want to go out here. We have two students tonight. This is their final meeting, except maybe Ryan might be hanging around for a minute. So, I'd like you to come out here so I can bring you out in front of the audience. Angela, I want to thank you for your year's service and trying to fit all this in between everything else you had to do, and to let us really know what was going on in your high school, and figuring out that this was maybe an okay thing to do, is to be out there, so we'd like you to have this. Congratulations. I'm going to give them a few words, too, because I think it's their perception and how they think about things in a way that's really important to us. Ryan, thank you for everything you've done on the board, your hard work, and for being here, and for being such a wonderful board member. I really appreciate it. And I hear through the grapevine, you might come back here? Yeah. Your new or board member who started as a junior and came back for their second year is sitting on the board right there, so you never know. Now, you can give your reports. And if you'd like to speak a little bit about your experience.
Yeah, I'll start, and I just want to thank everybody for having the honor to work with you guys, and it was amazing to see how much everybody puts in to, like, help the Eau Claire School District, like, move forward with working with the referendum and everything. I know that was a lot of work, so thank you, guys, for that. It was amazing to see how everything worked. And then, here's my report for this week. AP tests ended last Friday, and we had hundreds of tests were taken, so that's finally over. The Migration Night is this Thursday, and the theme of this year is the migration of information and misinformation, so I encourage you, guys, to attend if you can. It's a collaboration of all the fine arts, including English, music, and all of that. The Night of Jazz is coming up this Saturday night, and the Spring Play to Art and Beyond had a successful run last weekend. The National Honor Society had many volunteers at the Eau Claire Marathon and the girls in the run, Fun Run, last couple of weeks. And sports seasons are starting to come to an end, from boys tennis to girls soccer and track, so sports seasons are closing up, and so is this school year, so thank you.
Well, first off, I'd like to say that I'm honored to be chosen again as North Student Rep, and this past year has been Rep. And this past year has been, it's really changed my view of public education for the better. So, it's been a good first year, and I am excited to work with you all for another one. I'd like to extend a welcome to Commissioner Torres on behalf of the student body. If there are any questions regarding the students at North, please feel free to contact me at any time. Regarding the Equity Report tonight, I would like to again stress that equal enrollment is the path that the board needs to take if you are serious about reducing the disparities between the two high schools. This has been an issue for far too long, and it is the right thing to do if the students at both schools are to receive similar opportunities in education and activities. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. And now I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Dux, because she's going to speak of our new student reps. Thanks, Catherine.
Well, the last few years, Joe and I have gotten to interview students from each high school and select the next student representative from that high school for the following school year. So, we have a little report tonight, and I am going, I hope she's here. Is Lauren, Lauren here? And Priam, right?
Yeah.
And stand up, and she's going to represent Memorial next year. It's always a difficult decision because the students are so interested in doing this job and are outstanding students and have great career plans. So, if I may, Lauren, I'm going to say a little bit about your work at Memorial. She, not only at Memorial, but in the community. She's in Youth Leadership Eau Claire, the YMCA Healthy Kids Day Event Organizer, Peace Church, Mayo Clinic Health System, the French Press. She's an employee there. She does cross-country, track and field, Life of an Athlete, Key Club, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, National Honor Society, and Junior Physicians of American Club. So, we're looking forward to working with you, Lauren. Thank you. And Joe's going to introduce our other surprise representative.
I'll hold you in suspense. We'd had several wonderful candidates at North who applied to be North Student Representative moving into the next school year, and we just, we just couldn't let go of Ryan to keep him for another year. To tell you a little bit about Ryan, he's a member of the Student Council at North. He's played football at North. He is a member of the Clear Water Explosion Trap Team, the Cross Country Ski Team. He's been the music operator at hockey games. He's a member of the National Honor Society, really a well-rounded student that represents so many different cross-sections of the school. And as North's former student representative, I can say he's done just a wonderful job this year representing the interests of North and speaking up on issues and giving us as a board feedback from students and giving us ideas. So, I really look forward to us continuing to work with him this next year. Let's give it up for Ryan.
Thank you very much. Are we done? Okay. That moves us on to our board committee reports. So, I'm gonna work off the list that we're gonna work off during another part of the committee. So, do we have anything from budget development?
We do.
Fearless Leader on Budget Development, Commissioner Harder.
Yes, we, thank you. Good evening. We met last week, and we're meeting again next week and the week after that, and the week after that, and the week after that. But there's a lot going on, so it's good that we're getting some time to do all those meetings. Last week, we spoke about the ongoing discussion about the Compensation Letter, which has gone out as a questionnaire to staff a couple of months ago now. We got responses back and been continuing the process of putting those responses into categories. We wanna send out letters, the plan is to send out letters with slightly different responses for each of those categories. We'll be reviewing drafts for those responses, I believe, this Wednesday. Yes, tomorrow, well, day after tomorrow. We also, on the agenda last week, was the project plan for budget, which is just an overall kind of informational piece that we're doing throughout meetings to make sure, I would say it's really to make sure that all board members on the committee have various questions answered about the budget and that we're all kind of oriented in the same way. That's ongoing. We spoke also about the health insurance plan for 2017 and 18, specifically around the wellness requirement, and the need to refine that a little bit for married couples. There's a policy in place around wellness for all other staff members, but it doesn't really apply to married couples quite the same way. So, some language is being drafted on that, which will be presented to the larger board soon. And finally, we spoke also about, briefly about the next steps on OPEB, and the big news is next week, our meeting next week, a follow-up meeting with our OPEB advisor, probably another marathon session though, to talk about OPEB options. And, yeah, and that's basically what's happening in budget world.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. That takes us to Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Council, but we're going to cover that during commission. We don't really need to. Joint Commission on Shared Services, have we met? Catherine sits as vice president on that. As far as the Learning Environments and Partnerships Committee LEAP, I just want everyone to know that we, as a committee, have approved our two-year project charter, which basically lays out what we're going to do over the next two years, and it gives us kind of, we're working on the timeline and what that should look like. It has been vetted through the leadership in the district, and we're really excited that we're gonna move on with that. Other things within that is that we continue to get input from people that may want to start or initiate a conversation about an innovation zone, and we're making some other connections with the definition and the relevance and the meaning of our culture in meeting the needs of the whole child. So, very excited about that. Policy and Governance, Commissioner Luganville?
Good evening. We had a great meeting today. We discussed a possible revision to Policy 345.5 regarding our academic recognition system and class rank, and looked over feedback that we received from department chairs and National Honor Society advisors at both of the high schools. Some questions remain, but we're going to move forward with our revised policy draft and getting feedback now from admission officers, scholarship program officers, and other school districts in Wisconsin that have instituted similar changes. And one central point that we're articulating is our desire to ensure that any change that is made does not negatively impact student opportunities for admission or scholarships anywhere in our country and just improve our culture as a district. We also discussed Policy 345.1, and that's following up on actually, it was first brought up by our student representatives, and that's our grading and reporting policy. We discussed weighted and unweighted GPA, and some districts use the practice of recording both in some way, possibly taking into account advanced courses, dedication and longevity in academic programs, including the fine arts. So, we'll be continuing that discussion and obtaining some more information on that topic, some fact-finding. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. And that takes us, I think, to the Parent Advisory Council, and Dr. Hardabek's going to update us on that meeting.
So, in our main meeting, Carol Craig presented an overview about discussions groups that she and others are leading related to 21st Century Mission of Public Schools. And she proposed that the PAC members join a discussion group. She's hoping to get a group together very soon, and she has set a tentative date of Tuesday evening, May 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and she will determine the site based on the number of people who reply to her. Next, the PAC heard a report from the Demographic Trends and Facilities Planning Committee about recommendations for the possible school district boundary changes. Wendy Sue Johnson led the discussion, and the PAC members provided feedback about the proposal, and they offered suggestions about how the report might be conveyed to the school board. And we will hear this report later this evening in one of the committee reports tonight. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Hardabek. Commissioner Luganville, do you have a Special Education Liaison update?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, first up, I'll just mention Project Search briefly. Not anything that's already been sent to you, and you have a flyer here, but I do want to share that the Business Advisory Council for Project Search is actively assisting the interns with securing job opportunities. So, if you know of any businesses that may be a good fit and we're a connected group, please send them their way so that we can get these interns opportunities in our community. These are students who will be such a valuable asset to any business in Eau Claire, and their heart, their dedication, it's just wonderful. So, please consider it, and you can check out the Project Search Facebook page for information about all of the applicants, and you can send them a direct message there.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll also share, sorry. We had our first meeting last Thursday of the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, and that was held at Northstar. This is a new and active group of families, parents, educators, community members. So many advocates were there. It was really wonderful to see it getting started. And it's really nice for this community to have a group for peer support, for parents to share resources, ideas, and also to have a unified voice to be advocates within our district and within the state. So, really looking forward to that. I believe they're going to have four or five meetings throughout the year, so I'll make sure that board members know when those are. It's really great to hear what they have to share.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. Are there any other committee reports that board members want to provide for us tonight? No? Okay, thank you. So, that takes us to our legislative update, and that is Commissioner Luganville as well.
So, I just have a couple things to share. There are two assessment and opt-out bills currently circulating in the legislature. One would require each school district to annually provide, parents or guardians, a copy of instructions on how to access all of the examinations that a district administers throughout the year. And the other would simply expand the current opt-out. Current, under current law, a school district must excuse a pupil in fourth, eighth, ninth, 10th, or 11th from taking the WKCE. This would require us to excuse a student in any grade from 3th through 12th from taking any examination under state or federal law, except the new civics test that is a new requirement. So, the other piece I just wanted to share is, I know that the board has a really strong desire to keep one voice legislatively as advocates, and so I've drafted three potential resolutions for you to consider. They're going to be in the Friday letter for you to send feedback and see if it's a good fit. One is regarding the referendum restrictions that are being proposed. There are like six or seven circulating right now. One is regarding the proposed voucher transparency bill, and one is regarding the Leading on Lead Bill. So, those will be in your Friday letter.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganville. That takes us on to the Consent Resolution Agenda. Board members, feel free to pull anything if you need to from the agenda. So, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2017. Commissioner Fager?
No.
That's okay. Minutes of Closed Session, May 1st, 2017. Financial Report from April 2017. The 2016-17 Budget Adjustment. Gifts in the amount of $51,684.74 for the period of April 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2017. Payments of all bills in the amount of $4,165,772.80, and net payroll in the amount of $3,404,701.64 for the period of April 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2017. Human Resources Employment Report. Five-Year Capital Project Bids. Revised Policy 188, Public Input at School Board and Standing Committee Meetings. Adopt New Policy 663, Debt Management. And Adopt New Policy 744, Sustainability.
I move approval of 7.2 through 7.12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fager. Can we take a roll call vote, please, Patty? Thank you.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Oil?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Thank you. That takes us on to our individually considered resolutions, or resolutions. And the first one on here are board committee assignments. Usually, as board president, I send out the list of board committees and get input on where people would like to serve. This year, we thought we would do it as an open communication as a board tonight during our meeting. I've had some discussions or input from board members already because we need to fill the committee pieces that Carolyn Barsted filled. And so, budget development, I think that committee is gonna stay the same. Erin Harder, you'll remain the chair. Charles Vu has consented to maintain his place on that committee, and Catherine, Dux too. Okay? Is that okay with everybody? Okay. We'll move on to Democratic Trends and Facility Planning Council. Joe Luganville has asked to step off that committee. And so, I've asked, is there any other board members here who would like to sit on that committee?
My rationale for that is I would like to give someone else a chance, since I've been on two standing committees.
So, I did ask in my texting back and forth with Charles today whether he'd be willing to be on Demo Trends and Facility Planning Council, and he said yes. So, that would put Jennifer and Charles on that committee. Okay? Joint Commission on Shared Services, Catherine, you're on that committee. You serve as vice president, right? Charles Vu is on that committee, and Carolyn Barsted was on that committee. That is the committee that joins with the city council and the county board, where we work very diligently on collaboration of services and how we can more efficiently use the tax dollars within our community in the Chippewa Valley. So, is there any board members here tonight that would like to be on that committee?
I could serve there.
Okay. Eric?
Yes.
It meets at 7:30 in the morning.
About four times a year.
About four times a year. Yeah. Okay. So, I'll put you in there. Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Torres. Yeah. It's good coffee at that time of the morning. That was the favorite committee when I was on there. I think the LEAP, Environments and Partnership Committee, will remain the same that Erin and Commissioner Harder and I sit on that one presently, and we're, got some things working, so we thought we would do that for one more year. Okay? Policy and Governance Committee, Carolyn was on that committee. I've talked with Commissioner Torres, and he's agreed to be on that committee as well. So, thank you. Then we go on to Gifted Talented Advisory Council. Catherine, you're on that. I don't think it meets very often. Do you, is it okay? Do you stay on there? Yeah, thanks.
I like committees that don't meet.
Okay. We also have the Parent Advisory Council. Commissioner Vu sat on that one, and he wishes to step down. So, is there anyone that would like to, as a board member, step in on the Parent Advisory Council? They meet at the first Tuesday of the month at 7:00 p.m. I can take that one back since I, so I can put myself in that one. I like that one. I used to sit on that one when I... Special Education Liaison, Joe, you stay?
It's not that we don't only have meetings, it's just...
You stay connected. Yep. And then report back to the board. We have the Eau Claire Area School District Wellness Committee. Carolyn sat on that one with Commissioner Vu. I don't know if they've ever met. Go ahead, Joe.
I don't think we even need to really, yeah, they have never met as a group. That's the new one under our new policy. So, I know they're in the process of working on filling that committee and getting it out so people can apply to serve. So, but we do have two board members in it per our policy.
So, we need someone to take Carolyn's place. So, is there a volunteer that we could have that would start out in that committee? And want to, Erin? Okay. Thanks, Erin. Thanks, Aaron. Yep, they're coming. You bet. Okay, next come the other committees and positions which are, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we'll go through them pretty quick because I've kind of touched base with people already. So Board Legislative Liaison, Joe presently sits in that committee. It kind of sits there because he's also been asked by WASB to be part of the resolutions and that whole, so there's a pairing there. So Joe will leave you on that one, okay? Cooperative Education Service Agency, Jennifer, that, gosh, I don't know where to look anymore, I'm used to Jennifer being over there. Do you mind keeping that one? Is that okay? Thank you. Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation Board of Trustees, that's been Catherine. You stay there? Okay. Head Start Policy and Governance, that's me and I can stay there as well unless somebody else wants it. McKinley Charter School is open.
I'd do it before and I'd like it, but if somebody else wants to do it, otherwise I can go back to...
We'd love that. We'll put you back. Montessori Charter School Governance Board, Jennifer stepping off on that, it just doesn't fit with her trying to be back at work within an hour when the meeting lasts two hours long. So Eric, you've agreed to do that one as well, so thank you for that. We also have the Wisconsin Association of School Board Delegate and Alternate, that's been Joe and myself. Again, Joe sits as a committee member on resolutions for WASB. If somebody wants to be the alternate in my place, you can do that if you want.
This year I will, someone else will need to be the delegate this year because as a member of the committee, I will not be...
Oh, that's true.
Voting at the thing, so someone else needs to be the delegate and alternate. I mean, I'll be there with you, but needs to have two new people.
So we need one other person. I can go back as the delegate because I'll be there, but unless you want to do it Catherine, because you've been the delegate too in the past.
I can do that.
You want to do it? Then I'll be the alternate. Okay. Boy, this is going wonderful. So that's Catherine and Chris. Last one, Wisconsin Public Education Network Liaison, that's me right now. I can keep it, but I would like an alternate as well. Anybody?
That's just the best service.
Yep, but I think, you know...
Charles.
Yeah, okay.
Charles.
I'll do it with Charles. I, just an alternate because I can always go, so, okay. Do you want me to run through what we decided?
I need to move.
Good. Does somebody want to move?
Move, approve.
Move approval by Commissioner Luganville, second by Commissioner Fager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you very much. I was nervous about that, but not anymore. Next thing on our list is, let me see here, authorization to executive directors. And that is just something we do every year. And Abby, you want to, was it you or Kay?
Kay.
Kay, you want to explain it, please? I read it through, I could probably do it, but you'd know it better than I do.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So this is a motion that the board takes on an annual basis to grant Abby as the executive director of business services and myself the authority to do all the things that we normally do that you kind of rubber stamp during the summer months. We've expanded out the timelines for that to better accommodate summer school because when we have late hires for summer school and we need to wait for a board meeting, that leaves our kids without the appropriate staff member in front of them on a timely manner. So we've expanded that out to be able to encompass summer school questions and issues, but other than that, this is the annual thing that you approve.
Thanks Kay. Does someone want to move approval?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Luganville, second by Commissioner Dux. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, that takes us to our committee report items for discussion. And the first one on the list is Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee Report. And I think that's going to be Abby and Wendy, right? And then audience, we will have time for people to respond when they are finished, okay? We have audience input after each one of these. After the board has discussion, yes.
All right, so we are here to present the demo and trends recommendations for the 16-17 year. Our committee members are Commissioner Fager and Commissioner Luganville, both from the school board. Mark Goings, I believe he's in the audience somewhere. Wendy Su is our chairperson this year. Dave Fitzgerald, Ashley Koscherick, Phil Lyons, Jason Schlefer, Carol Johnson, Tim Nordine, Carrie Ronander, Janet Seymour and Ryan Wykalt. And I know I saw Carol Johnson here and I don't know if I saw anybody else. I think that might be a...
Carrie's here?
Oh, I missed you, sorry Carrie. So I asked some of the committee members to come in case we, in case the board had additional questions and that way they could also kind of jump in and help answer questions. Why are we looking at the recommendations that we're looking at this year? Obviously you've heard tonight from public forum that we have a recommendation regarding boundaries for the Eau Claire School District, but we want to go back a couple of years. In 2015-16, the Facility Planning Council recommended that the board look at developing an equity committee to study the disparity in gifts and donations. You're going to hear their report next. Solutions for High School Differences, the difference in 2016 between the two schools was 395 students. One of the things the board acted on earlier this year was making the open enrollment request placed at North High School. One of the things that was talked about in an earlier recommendation was developing a magnet school at North, implement a gradual boundary change and then create a 9, 10 and 11, 12 building. Those recommendations, some of them were made actually a couple of years ago and had not been acted upon by the board, so we talked with the board a couple of months ago about kind of resurrecting them and asking which direction the board would like us to go. And then finally, we also have a recommendation for some short and long-term solutions for Roosevelt Elementary. Yeah.
I just want to, I'm going to jump in a little bit, just for background for the people in the audience and some newer board members perhaps. The Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Advisory Council was created after Little Red was closed. And one of the things that came out of that process was a need to long-range plan. And so this committee's been active, very active. The charge is to give you annual recommendations regarding demographic trends, boundary issues, capacity updates and whatnot. The board appoints the members and Abby went through the members and there's actually probably more community members on this than at any time. And a lot of those individuals who are citizens and business members also have kids in the school district and so they bring a lot of great perspective. Ten community members and most of them have current students or had students at one point. So I just wanted to point that out. One of the things that we've done several times through this committee is the Applied Population Lab. Bob Cron actually referred to that report and we've had it updated several times. The board probably has seen this, you have a link to it on the website, but if anyone in the public wants to see it, you're welcome to. It's projections for every single school and sorted in all sorts of ways and you are welcome to take a look at my copy. It's all set up here for anyone who wants to do that. But back to the solutions, there was four identified and I think it's important to point out that, again, open enrollment was acted upon and the policy that you approved, if we have the same numbers consistently coming into our district, it will mean about 50 students will eventually move within the next 12 years. So it's not the solution that's going to get us to an equal enrollment. And then the other two, developing a magnet school and creating a 9, 10, 11, 12 building, in other words, two campus, one school idea, are really not the purview of the demographic trends committee and belong within the administration or in the LEAP committee. I do want to go back to the magnet school idea. There was a technology charter school located at North High School, which is one of the ideas that people say, well, you know, put something there to draw people. And I came on the board just as it was kind of defunct, folded. So I don't know why that didn't work. You'd certainly have to go back to somebody who was kind of in on that to learn that, but it was something that was tried in the past and as the LEAP committee reported, it's not something that's coming down the pike anytime soon. So, you know, so that's not really something that's going to solve our problem either. And you all know that I came to you a few months ago before we asked our committee to spend three, you know, long meetings filtering the one that's left on that list and that was the boundary change. So that's the one, you know, primarily we'll be talking about tonight, which we worked on with your blessing. So I just wanted to provide that little background to you. We did make another recommendation, not dealing with the high schools, but dealing with Roosevelt. We actually had voted on that earlier in the year, the long-term solution piece. The short-term solution was implemented already this past fall based on last year's, the work of last year's committee and that really deals with flexible boundaries and that's an idea that, you know, seems to be working in this one particular school and could be implemented in elementary schools that, you know, might have those issues in the future. So I think Abby then wanted to talk about the long-range solution which the committee did vote to recommend.
Yep, so a couple of months ago, the committee actually voted to recommend an option for Roosevelt. And again, we are talking the long-term solution because we know that we have a flexible boundary for the short-term solution and that worked in 16-17, we're still planning to use that for 17-18. So last fall probably, or last year, probably about the same time in May, the board recommended that the administration move forward with an architectural study for Roosevelt Elementary. And so we got the report this fall and the architect came back with three options for the district. Option one was to remodel the existing building on the same property. Option two was to build a new building on the same property and option three was to build a new building on a different property. And so, you know, there were some price differences clearly in all three options. The big thing with option one that the committee was very concerned about is this building already has different wings of different ages and so trying to salvage what you can salvage and make sure things are working probably isn't the best investment for the district to make. And so the committee talked about that a lot, but decided that really wasn't a great option. So that really limited them to options two and three. We talked a lot about community neighborhood schools and trying to keep that neighborhood together by keeping a school there. In the city's plan that they had released a couple of years ago, they actually had property set aside north of Jeffers Road for a new school. But if anybody's been paying attention, that's now Ball Field and so that land has been used for a different purpose. And so, so probably the city could work on finding us, you know, we could work with them to find some additional property, but our committee really recommended option two, which was to build a new building on the same property and then eventually tear down the original Roosevelt property that's currently in place. We know that, we talked a lot about when could this happen? We've also talked about South Middle School and some of the needs that South has and so what would make sense to the committee is that if a building referendum goes forward and, you know, when that debt drops off in 2021, perhaps Roosevelt is included at that same time and we would go to referendum to do that. Commissioner Harder?
Go ahead. So I think I heard you say something about the way the wings had already been divided up that maybe made option two a little bit more feasible than option one. It just seems to me expanding an existing building would naturally, I mean, I don't know a ton about it, but intuitively it seems like it would be a cheaper option to get more bang for the buck, but there must be reasons. Could you expand on those a little bit?
Sure. Okay. So the estimate for option one was between 17 and 18.5 million and options two and three were both about 18.5 to 19.5 million. So, you know, depending on what end of the range you land in, you know, it could be a million dollar difference, but I went on to your five-year capital plan and there's $800,000 worth of work at Roosevelt that's been identified. Presumably some of that is on the old section that you would try to salvage. And then there is the disruption factor and how you get a, you know, a new school built while tearing down a piece of the old school, you know, and you've only got three months where you don't have kids and so we have to relocate them. And then attaching an old building to a new building and the, you know, the kind of unknowns that go with that and so the facility people talked to us about that as well. So I think, you know, when you look at the, you know, the maintenance identified, the number becomes smaller and smaller and with all of the kind of unknowns and the disruption in the students day, option two became, you know, kind of clearly preferred for logistical reasons.
So just a brief follow-up then, does that, am I hearing it that the existing building would stay in place while the new building is being built or does it have to knock down the current one to build the new?
I think that you, the footprints were sent to you some time ago and you certainly can get those again, but I don't think that there is overlap. I think the new building will be built where basically where the playground is. Yep.
Do you have another question? No? Okay.
If there are any other questions about Roosevelt, that now would be a good time to ask because we're going to move on from that.
I don't think there is.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So, so back to why balancing high school enrollments. So first of all, I would say that this committee did not redo the work that the committee did two years ago. We spent quite a bit of time talking about what disparity looks like. Again, Bob Cron shared some, you know, examples that his children experienced and some of the things that were, have been identified, or I'd say, I don't know, within the last five to seven years, have been tackled by the high school principals. And so there's been a number of actions that have been taken to do what we can to remedy those disparities. There, both schools are offering the same courses and if they're not, they don't have enough students to run at both places, they're coordinating a bit more. They align their bell schedules. So initially that was, so children could, children, young people could commute essentially back, you know, to the other school first hour, for example, and then only miss, you know, have study hall second hour while they're, you know, coming back across town. But then, it's my understanding that that travel actually has been eliminated, there's been more progress with equity and the bell schedule has more to do now with the distance learning piece. And so there are classes that are being offered by distance learning. They, from my understanding, tend to be housed at Memorial more often because those, the students at Memorial are, there's more of them. So if there's 15 kids at Memorial and seven at North, you're going to probably put the teacher, you know, with the 15 kids, but there has been some additional steps taken to have the teacher travel at least part of the week. But of course, no matter if the teacher is at Memorial one day or North the other day, whatever students are not present are going to have a more difficult time. So if you're talking about higher level classes like accounting three, you know, and I can't imagine having accounting three and not having the teacher there to kind of look at what you're actually working on. So the principals have done a lot to provide the same or similar opportunities for kids at both schools. They have collaborated on using full-time equivalencies in order to make sure those course offerings run. So, you know, for anybody, you know, concerned that this is, you know, kind of a one, you know, good for North but not for Memorial, Memorial actually has a higher ratio of students to staff because they are basically borrowing FTEs to North in order to run some of those classes. So, you know, that would definitely be something that could benefit children at Memorial having slightly smaller class sizes, so more attention from their teachers. Increasing students taking AP, you guys have celebrated that several times in the past few years. The number of students and percentage of students at North has increased, the number of students taking tests has increased, the number of students passing tests has increased. There's definitely been progress there as expectations have been set and students are encouraged to do those sorts of things and taking higher level courses. And you're closing the gap score has improved. So I don't want to put him on the spot, but sometimes Dave Volk will jump in and correct anything or add to anything that I've said. He was in on the conversations and essentially two years ago when we talked about the disparity, he and Dave Oldenburg, who was the principal at the time, basically said, "We think we've done all that we can within the parameters that we have." Anything the Davs want to add?
Yeah, I would say, as we talked at the PAC meeting and Wendy Su presented this, I think that listing in that order is very accurate. Same course offerings, you know, I've worked with Dave when he was principal at Memorial and now Trevor. Sure, back to same course offerings. We have been operating this way for quite some time. Dave and I for several years and now working with Trevor. Certainly looking at all of the advanced placement, dual credit, advanced, enriched, we start with that. I will say, when you look at all of the... I will say, when you look at all of the courses offerings, among all of the disciplines, there may, and there are some differences, but they're very minor. Some electives run at one school and not at the other, and we've never considered that to be a problem. But in terms of all of the core classes and what we would call the advanced rigor classes are all the same. Wendy Sue touched on the aligned bell schedule, that's true. Several years ago, we tried kind of using first period with an early start and allowing kids to go to, get on a bus. We had a bus at both high schools, and it took students across town. We were running some, kind of some unique pre-engineering courses. After a year that just wasn't real feasible anymore, didn't work real well. So we, we got rid of that, and then we moved into distance learning. So the aligned bell schedule allows us now to run distance learning classes from each high school to the other high school. You have heard about the teacher sharing, they do that. Prior to changing the bell schedule, we had a difference of about five or six minutes. So that has been aligned now for several years. Collaborating on the use of FTEs, that was touched on. Certainly, the number of students taking higher rigor courses, not just AP, but certainly all the transcripted credits and so on, has occurred at both schools, along with Project Lead the Way. And I'll let you kind of finish up. But that, that order is, that's, that's a pretty fair ordering of how things have occurred.
So again, the work that could be done has been done. And what we heard then was balancing the numbers of kids at each place would make their jobs even easier and be able to balance the opportunities. The, I think the most concrete thing for me is another example that Dave shared with us is that, you know, if there's higher-level classes like Accounting III or, you know, German IV, or, you know, things that kids are taking later on, and there might only be one section of it, what if all of those things land in third hour? If you only have one section of Accounting III and German IV and, you know, I don't know, what other classes, you know, might have just one section? Well, when you have more students at Memorial, there might be two sections. Well, that's just enough so that a student who wants German IV and Accounting III can take both of those things. And so even though the courses are being offered, it still provides barriers when you have less numbers of kids in the building. You know, and I think there were some other examples with, you know, the number of students in the music program and the number of, you know, different music groups that you can offer with the number of students in those buildings. So there's, there's examples that you just can't balance without balancing the numbers. Yep. So there's the past, I don't know, twenty-some years. The smallest disparity was eighty-one students in nineteen ninety-four. I'm not sure why we started in nineteen ninety-four, but perhaps it's when we started keeping records online, I don't know. But you can see that, you know, the, for the past about a dozen years, it's been increasing, the difference in students. Memorial is growing at a faster rate than North. That's been true for over twelve years. The APL says it's going to continue. It actually continued at a higher rate. It's stabilized the past three years right around four hundred students. But again, it's, it's not decreasing, and we don't really expect it to. I want to note as well that when North was built in nineteen sixty-two, in the fall of nineteen sixty-two, it was actually a junior high and a high school. And so it was created smaller for, you know, because half of it was a, was a junior high. And then when DeLong opened in nineteen seventy-two, you know, there wasn't a huge boundary change. Nobody seems to know if the boundaries have ever changed. It, it is not in anybody's living recollection. Jim Fie has been running the bus company for fifteen years. He says definitely has been no high school boundary changes in his time. And nobody can seem to point to any time. So we think it's basically been the same boundary for the last fifty-five years.
I, I used to know this, but I don't have the, the exact numbers in my head anymore. What is the capacity at North and Memorial?
Yeah, so Memorial peaked at just under two thousand several years ago. And, you know, so they, it got, it got pretty crowded, from what I understand, when it was, you know, at nineteen hundred students or so. But it, it's been significantly bigger. And North has had eighteen hundred, it probably says it on there. Yeah, seventeen sixty-two was the biggest. And that, and that wasn't overcrowded. At one point, we actually had early learning in North High School because there was extra classes until we, you know, put them in their own space. So there isn't, we're not running out of space at either place. Although Memorial has some barriers as far as like the cafeteria, and the hallways are a little bit more narrow. And so, you know, giving it some breathing room might actually, you know, help it. But we won't run out of space for the foreseeable future.
Commissioner Duette?
I was told by some of the music instructors that it's very difficult with one practice space for four different groups and that you can't leave anything out. There's just no storage for instruments and things like that. So that's one drawback, and Mr. Colhough can correct me if I'm wrong.
I've not heard that, but I don't doubt it. All right, any other questions about the enrollment?
I don't see any.
Okay. So the committee guiding principles. There are eleven guiding principles. Some of them don't apply. One of, guiding principle number nine is about elementary schools. But these are essentially the guiding principles that the Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Advisory Council created when it created the committee. They spent many, many months after it was formed talking in broad parameters about what should be considered. And looking at the guiding principles, well, first of all, the demographics, we know that from the APL study, the projections, we have those projections. You know, there's, we always hear about new housing projects and, you know, whether they come to fruition or not, you know, it can remain to be seen. But we do know from the geography of the district that there aren't a lot of new housing starts on the north and east side of town because we're landlocked by L two and N, Lake Hallie. There are some empty lots, you know, on all sides of town, you know, but the, the growth is moderate. Of course, the growth on the south side and the west side is greater because we're not landlocked by another district. There's a lot of developable, developable, is that a word? Land that can be developed. So other guiding principles that are important. We talked about building capacity. The move will be below the maximum enrollment at North for the foreseeable future. And I say foreseeable because you can't really project past the babies that are already born and, you know, what your growth is actually going to be. Socioeconomic makeup of the school. This was the hardest one, and I'll show you with the, the map a little bit. Our recommendation does not improve the socioeconomic balance. Memorial's free and reduced lunch rate, which is kind of the best measure we have of that or the easiest measure perhaps to use, is around twenty-six percent. North's is around forty-three percent. You know, the district average is around forty-one percent. There's a couple of things that we do know about the, the schools that feed into the high schools. Both the rates at North and Memorial should be higher if all things were equal by the kids coming in. So there's a couple of things that maybe are going on. One is high school kids maybe are less inclined to eat hot lunch. They have transportation, so, you know, if they can't afford à la carte, maybe they're driving home for lunch. Another, you know, thing that could explain the lower rates at the high schools compared to their feeder schools is the fact that families with older children probably have more established careers than families with real young children. So we don't know exactly why. But we did look at the socioeconomic makeup of the elementary schools. And frankly, the only way you could balance that is by increasing your transportation cost by quite a bit, which comes with, you know, some other issues as well. Again, I'll point that out on the map. So, you know, there are no Title I dollars tied to the high schools. You, as a district, have chosen to put your Title I dollars at lower levels. And so while we can't improve this bullet point or this guiding principle, there, nothing that the committee has heard over the past many meetings tells us that, that that really is a problem. That, you know, there's other things being done with expectations and whatnot that we don't, we don't feel that that's, that's a reason not to do this, essentially. Long-term solutions, of course, you can't really look beyond, much beyond the kids that are already born and going to school. But there's nothing that leads us to believe that North is going to grow faster than Memorial, essentially, ever. We have a kind of look at things as a minimum of five years, and we really think that, you know, this one will last more than that. There's just no scenario we can imagine where you would have to move the boundary back. So it will be long-term. Minimizing transportation time and cost, again, that's something we'll maybe look at with the map. Siblings, there was a question about siblings. There is an intra-district transfer policy, which is in effect now. They, it was probably looser maybe ten years ago when there wasn't capacity issues particularly at the elementary school. But that intra-district policy is still an option for every student. Right now, we have approximately five students that live in the North attendance area that go to Memorial and approximately five students that live in the Memorial attendance that go to North. And the administrators keep, you know, keep that process a little bit secret because they don't want us parents to game the system, I suspect. But, you know, there's twelve to fifteen people who put in an application, and five were approved, and that would still be available. Siblings is one of the considerations. I do believe it's concurrent siblings. You know, obviously, you don't want to, you know, if you have a kid who's graduating in twelfth grade, where do you draw that line? You know, it makes sense if you've got a freshman who's riding with their older sibling who's a junior or senior. You know, that just makes, you know, a lot of logistical sense. And so that process is an option for families who find themselves in those unique circumstances. So if you're interested in a more specific sibling question, I would encourage you to talk to the principal at your high school because they know what that process entails. Questions about our guiding principles?
I just want to add on the transportation cost because I know that came up earlier tonight. We worked really closely with Jim Fie from Student Transit to kind of project out what would that cost look like. And essentially, we'd be looking at an additional bus route for approximately three years. And he figured it would be about twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars a year. So we're talking about ninety thousand, and that would go away after those three, you know, after those three years, because the kids that are currently at Memorial would stay there. And then he said that he would also be looking at maybe one other bus route just because he didn't know if he could get everybody where they need to go in that hour. You know, our, kind of our guidelines are to get kids to school in less than an hour. So he was able to share that with the committee, and that wasn't an overarching concern for the committee as well.
Yeah, I, I guess I was pleasantly surprised that we're talking less than forty thousand dollars each of three years, and then it would be done. If you choose to do more than what we've recommended, you would be adding transportation costs. But he, and he likes to estimate high because he doesn't want, you know, to, you know, to come in over budget. So essentially, the, the kids in the transition, you know, boundary area, if they're already students at Memorial, will continue to have the option to bus to Memorial while the, the incoming freshmen on the change year would, would go to North. So that would be that three-year transition. To make sure we weren't going to, you know, do something and then contradict it in some way with the elementary boundaries, we talked about elementary boundaries as well. Currently, there are some schools that are feeling a little bit near capacity. And we have, like I had mentioned earlier with Roosevelt, had recommended the flexible boundaries for this year, and that's something that could be implemented. Sherman and Robbins were designed as overflow schools in those, you know, growth areas of town. And so, you know, if we get into a pinch, like with Roosevelt, that was really, you know, tied with space, some new students coming into the school were actually given the choice to, to go to Sherman. And so that, you know, has worked well with, you know, with some small numbers. And so really, the, the capacity at elementary schools, it's how many kids are in a classroom? And, you know, when you have a bubble class, say, third grade is really big this year, it's where do you put that, that extra class that one year? And at this point, looking at where those, those big classes are, the bubble classes are, it appears that they're at the upper levels and that there should, the problem shouldn't be getting worse in the foreseeable future. But that's something, again, you charged the committee to make annual recommendations. And so that's something elementary boundaries will be looked at as long as the committee exists every year. And I believe the Policing Governance Committee was going to be considering a boundary change policy to further guide that conversation. So at this point, the committee didn't feel that there was a need to make any recommendations on elementary boundaries. So even though the solution seems, seemed really obvious to some people, I, I wouldn't let them get to the solution until we really discuss the parameters of it. So the committee decided that ideally, we would move two hundred students. So if you take two hundred from Memorial and add two hundred to North, you've solved the four hundred problem. We didn't want to undersolve it because, again, of the growth areas, but realized that it's never going to be perfectly equal and that within a hundred students either way is probably, you know, a good solution that, that we can accept. So even if we move two hundred students and the south side doesn't grow as much as we think, and you've, you know, sent those fifty open enrollment students there eventually, you know, we probably, even if we did have a few more students at North, it would never be a hundred more based on the solutions that we're presenting. There are currently two elementary schools that have boundary areas that overlap both high schools. So there are kids that go to Lake Shore that go to both North and Memorial. There are kids at Sherman that go to both North and Memorial. Both Lake Shore and Sherman feed into DeLong. We also looked at kind of the timeline, what would make sense. We talked about, you know, some transition time on either end. And really, you know, other parents talked me out of it, that it would be best to not give people a lot of exceptions because the, you know, the families that can, are more able to take advantage of exceptions are probably people who can transport their kids. And so if anything, then we would be possibly making the socioeconomic balance worse, not better. And we invited principals in. Tim from DeLong came in and Mandy from Sherman and assured us that, well, at DeLong, that one year was plenty of time. The North principals, yeah, the high school principals said, "One year is plenty of time for us to plan." And it was very reassuring that Tim O'Reilly, you know, said that the students will be fine. It's, you know, how the adults help them through that transition. And I know Abby's been working on a transition plan that you all probably will, you know, want to talk to her more about. And the committee had, you know, information to share with her. But the students will take their cue from the adults, and they will adapt just fine. But there are lots of kids at DeLong that go to both North and Memorial, and it's been, you know, really neat for them to maintain those connections at both high schools when they move on. And so, you know, whether they go with this friend group or that friend group, probably, you know, will be okay. Any questions about any of that? Oh, Jim Fie said a year was plenty of time for him as well. We did have him there to confirm that. So the specific area, then, of course, that we looked at, like I mentioned, was Sherman and Lake Shore. There are currently about a hundred kids at, in the Sherman attendance area that go to Memorial. So if you are looking at a K six or K five, you know, six grades, you multiply that point, point six, seven to get how many kids will be in a four-grade span, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. And about sixty-eight students was our estimate on moving all of the Memorial kids from the Sherman attendance area to North. And then with Lake Shore, same thing, there's two hundred and forty that are in the Memorial attendance area. Times point six, seven is about a hundred and sixty students that you would expect as a net gain. So sixty-eight plus one sixty. Now, the sub-bullet under Lake Shore, there, there are a number of students who live south and east of the river. And when we get to the map, you'll, you can see that pretty clearly. And so by subtracting them out, we aren't quite getting the numbers that you could if you moved all the Lake Shore kids. But it makes sense, especially for transportation costs, so. Any questions about the numbers, the math? All right, so if you haven't found it yet, on the Eau Claire Area School District website, across the top, one of the choices is enrollment. If you click on enrollment, on the bottom-left corner, there's a green circle, and you can play with the maps. If you are a visual learner, you can click elementary, middle, and high school boundaries and, and see exactly where they are. These are zoomed in on, so the west side of town, you can see Truax Boulevard, Highway twelve, Highway ninety-four. So the green square on the left is the Sherman attendance area. And then on the right is more the center of town. The red flag is the district office. The yellow flags are all elementary schools. The yellow section surrounding Carson Park is the Lake Shore attendance area. Then purple is Putnam Heights, green is... Shore attendance area. Um, then purple is Putnam Heights, green is Mans, uh, orange is Flynn, red is Lake Shore. Um, just so one note, I think you can see it better here. If you look at the yellow, uh, Lake Shore area, you can see that it looks like kind of a growth that shoots out to the right there. Um, and you can see that that's south and east of the river. So that would be downtown into the area around the university. If you, as a board, wanted to balance socioeconomic, um, makeup of the two high schools, you could choose to move that area. Um, but we are not recommending that because they're essentially walkers, um, to Memorial. And so, um, they do not receive transportation to high school now. Um, and, you know, adding them would add, you know, quite a bit of cost. Um, you know, and they're really close, you know, and there's something to be said about the convenience for families to, you know, to be able to go with their extracurricular activities and evening performances and all of that. So, um, so that's, the, the recommendation does not include that kind of outgrowth to the, to the bottom right there of the yellow section. Then there's the map of the high schools. Um, purple is Memorial, blue is north. Um, the blue flags are the two high schools. So you can see from the proximity, and we've zoomed in and left out some of the outline areas. There's a lot of geographic space south and west, um, not quite as much north. Um, but the high schools are, you know, pretty close to the center of town. Memorial even more so. And so, again, to move anybody, um, other than the Lake Shore and Sherman, which, you know, again, is north and west of the Chippewa River, um, you know, by proximity doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Again, you'd be taking like the Flynn, East Hill, you know, really close to Memorial, the downtown, um, university area, or busing somebody from, you know, the south side up the bypass, right past Memorial. So, um, just kind of the ge- geography of our district, um, doesn't really make sense to take any other, any other place. You know, and frankly, when I tell people that, "Well, we're recommending moving the boundary to, to the Chippewa River", they're like, "Wasn't it already there?" Um, and I know that, you know, the, the people who live on the west side probably already know that. But it, it's a, it's a mental, you know, it's a, it's a logical geographic barrier, um, or dividing line. Um, and the kids, again, west of town are going to be bused one of two places. And so we're not going to be increasing our transportation costs a whole lot. Questions about that map? All right. So we've already sort of mentioned the recommendations. Um, the recommendation is to have all students north and west of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers attend north. Um, based on the current enrollment, we would be adding close to 200 students. Um, all students south and east of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers would continue to attend Memorial. Um, the recommendation is that the new boundary would affect, um, the incoming freshman students grandfathering in, the older students in the 2018, 2019 school year. So this year's seventh graders, next year's eighth graders. Um, so there'd be a full year for staff, families busing to, to plan for that transition. Um, you know, there, again, there was discussion amongst the committee that, um, you know, anything longer than that, you're just, you know, basically delaying it. Um, you know, the disparity has been there. It'll be there. You know, if you say, "Okay, we're not gonna, you know, do it for the current seventh graders," then you're, you know, then the sixth graders have to adjust. Um, and again, it's all students that are already going to school with kids that go to both high schools. Um, for those people living in the affected areas, I'm sure you've probably gotten emails about it. I understand. Um, my dad was the first graduating class of north high school. I was the 25th. My daughter was the 50th. My son will be the 56th. Um, we bought a house on the north side because my kids went to north. And if somebody told me a year from now that they'd have to go to Memorial, I might buy a new house. I get it. But that's not a reason not to do it. Um, there's been disparity, you know, for a long time. I suspect nobody has wanted to be the one to vote to change boundaries because it's not popular for the people who it affects. Um, you know, but it's the right thing for the district. Um, you know, and one of our business committee members is a, a Realtor. And he has told us, "When Putnam Heights was sent from south to DeLong, people sold their houses and moved." And if people choose to do that, that's their individual family choice. But that doesn't mean it wasn't the right thing to do, um, to divvy up the hu- the middle schools in a, in a way that made sense for the buildings and for the kids. So, um, change is hard. Um, and, yeah, I don't have to vote on it. You guys do. So, um, we hope that you will trust the work that the committee has done over the past, really, three, four, five, six years or more. Strategic plan, that's you.
Yeah. So after we presented to the Parent Advisory Council, we got some questions about how does this link to our strategic plan? Because that drives a lot of the decisions that the board is making. And so there's really two areas that it links to the strategic plan. And the first area is in the academic achievement area. Um, and by balancing enrollments, it's more likely that we would had fewer, we would have fewer singleton sections of classes. Um, I know Wendy Sue talked about it earlier. You know, if you have German IV and Accounting III running at the same time, it's really difficult for those kids that want to take both classes if it's only one section at one school. Um, then the tie to the student's social and emotional growth would be, um, smaller high schools slash class sizes with more opportunities. Um, and again, if we can offer the same number of sections, there could be more opportunities for kids. And then the other thing that we need to consider is that larger schools can provide less opportunities for co-curricular activities. Um, if you have one school play and you can only take 50 kids, if you have, you know, 150 that want to be part of it, now you've just lost 100 kids. And so, um, just looking at some of those extracurricular things and how that can be balanced. From a staffing standpoint, um, buildings are staffed similarly, similarly right now. If we look at guidance counselors and, um, administrators and things like that, we don't perceive that to be changing at all. Um, but just some things that, um, we felt were important to talk about when we talk about the ties to the strategic plan. Are there any other questions for us?
I just, yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Fager?
Uh, I've had the privilege of serving on this committee just for this last year. And I think it's important to note, first of all, that I, um, A, am not from Eau Claire and B, do not have children. Thus, no children in the district. And I, I signed on to join the school board for the benefit of all the children in Eau Claire, not just the students that live in the district where I happened to buy a house. Um, and i- it, it's really important to me as a, as a community member that we privilege all the students in Eau Claire. Um, one of our goals is post-secondary success for all children. And it's not just the children at one school or another, it's all children. Um, I am very much supportive of the decision that we, we made to provide equity to all the youth that attend either high school. And quite frankly, we need to also remember that we have three high schools. McKinley is also one of our high schools. Um, I, I am committed as a school board member to success for all students at north, at Eau Claire, Memorial, and at McKinley. And, um, I think that the decisions that we made were based on data, not on emotion, not on past experiences or, um, personal beliefs or values, or who wants to wear purple or who wants to wear blue. Um, I think it was ma- made, those decisions were made based on the kinds of demographic data that are essential in, in redistricting for schools or for electorates, or any of those other kinds of issues that are done on a regular basis with, um, the kinds of, of data that we gather at the state level and nationally. I think the, the choices that we made based on geography make a lot of sense. And as, as Wendy mentioned, um, we chose a group that are the walkers to Memorial High School because it, it is not adding an extra cost to the district. And I think that that was also a significant piece. So it's, there, there were also finances, um, included. Um, I think one of the other pieces of data that we need to share with you is that while we may not have solved the socioeconomic issues, we also are, um, sending children, recommending to send children from Lake Shore and Sherman. And it's important to note, in case you're not familiar, that the children at Lake Shore, in last year's report card, scored at the significantly exceeds expects, expectations level. I hope you, you've heard that. Number two, the children at Sherman Elementary School, who will be affected, exceed expectations. So those children who we are, uh, recommending to send to north are going to add a great deal to that high school i- i- when, when they get there. And I'm, I'm hoping that, that the children who are, are doing so well now will continue to do exceptionally well when, um, they, they join the doghouse.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Well, um, thank you, everybody who, who played a role, first of all, in, in bringing this recommendation. Um, I've also been serving on the, this committee for the past two years. And, um, you know, we've tasked our high schools with addressing equity concerns to make sure that every single child in this district, no matter where they're at, they have equity in their education. They have equal access. Our high schools have done everything that they can up until this point. And some of, just some of it was mentioned tonight. But that just scrapes the surface of, of the work that our staff does at both of the high schools to make sure that, that we're helping every single child succeed. This is, uh, you know, something that I, I really appreciate that we've had people emailing, sending messages. It's really important that we hear your voice. And I'm going to ask about some of the, those pieces later. Um, but I just, I mean, we can't kid ourselves. This is a historic issue. This is a decision, and this is a conversation tonight, 2017, that is 55 years in the works. So it's, it is a data-based decision. It's an equity-based decision for us. But it's an emotional issue for our community. And it's something that matters a lot to a lot of people. So, you know, no matter what we do, um, here, no matter what decision we make or where we draw the lines, we will not be able to ensure that every single family will be happy or satisfied. We won't be able to do that. But I'm, what I'm hoping and what I want to talk about tonight is making sure that we do everything in our power to make sure that no one is disenfranchised with our decision. So I, I want to make sure that we, that we have adequate opportunities to, to speak with neighborhoods, speak with the schools who would be impacted. Um, because that voice matters a great deal. Um, I guess, so my first kind of question, piece I want to talk about is, um, you know, we've, we've heard from different neighborhoods, uh, some who are physically closer to Memorial than they are to north, but would be going to north under this plan. What is the message to those families? What is, and I know we've talked about transportation and other considerations. But kind of what is, can you just sum that up for me? What we, um, plan on sharing in that way?
Well, I don't have all the answers to that question. Um, but that's part of the transition plan. And one of the things that we talked about is communication is the key. You heard that from our committee. Um, I think the board would really have to decide what direction. I personally envision, kind of like we talked about the referendum and having here, listening sessions and getting feedback. Um, I think that's very important. And I think the board really values our community input. And so part of the transition plan that we had talked about, um, and shared with the Demo and Trends Committee was, what does that communication plan look like? And we would need input from the board. Um, but I do think that the listening sessions would be something that we should really look at. We got a lot of important feedback when we had the referendum forums.
I have more, but I'll let others.
Could I, Commissioner Harker?
Just a follow-up to that. I think you talked about timeframes and being sort of very imminent in their timeframes. But what is a kind of a workback schedule when you talk about listening sessions and things like that, outreach? I assume those would have to happen pretty quickly if it's going to happen prior to a vote, if that's what we're talking about.
I would agree. And I think that's really up to the board to decide, you know, do we want to have listening sessions first and then have a vote? Or, you know, kind of what are the next steps from the board and which, which approach would you like us to take?
Commissioner Dugan?
Well, I want to thank the Demo and Trends Committee for a thorough study. And it seems to me that you asked all the right questions. And it seems quite logical that we would go in this direction. Um, I'm very proud of both high schools and the leadership that's there. And I think we can be proud of the students at both of those high schools. So thank you so much for doing that study.
I want to make a comment as well. I thought about what I would say, um, for quite a while, uh, waiting for this report, kind of knowing what it would be. I wore my shirt tonight because, um, I just wanted to thank you for looking at the cost as well. Um, we just passed referendum and are very thankful for that referendum. But the referendum basically keeps us on an even keel. It doesn't give us a ton more to work with at all, uh, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Um, and everybody still needs to know we're probably more than $418 below the state average per pupil right now. And that in all of this and as we make decisions, we still, as a board, need to be very cognizant of what is happening with public school funding in our state of Wisconsin. And that that is an overlaying factor that we, um, need to be part of this conversation with every single decision we make. So I, I just wanted to thank you for, for looking at that and, and what the cost could be to, um, um, we have to, we have to take that into consideration. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Harker?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the words of thanks. My colleagues have offered for the Demo, Trends, and Facilities work. I know it's gone on for years. I understand that through lore more than through direct experience. But, uh, I know it's been a long road. And, uh, it's clear, you know, that, uh, the plan, it just seems extremely evolved and, and carefully thought through. I really, particularly as a board member, appreciated, um, having the, uh, the sort of guiding principles laid out and so, so clearly spoken to in the presentation. Um, and, uh, I think it's time, it's time that we act. And, uh, the recommendation here seems like a very sound one. So, thanks.
Commissioner Luganbill?
I, um, I just want to share one of my kind of ideas with what this could look like in terms of what we, as a board, would consider. I kind of foresee some sort of a timeline being approved that would, I, I think first and foremost, need to include listening sessions. Because I think that if, if there's one kind of component missing, it's listening sessions. We've done, we've done just about everything else. We've had every stakeholder at the table, including parents. But we have not opened it up to non-committee members within the district's framework. So I feel like that is the, the most important thing that we, that we do next, moving forward with whatever we approve. Um, I would foresee it being listening sessions at the impacted schools within the proposal, but also extending it to the different neighborhood associations impacted within the proposal.
I concur with the, what you've said, Commissioner Luganbill. Anybody else have wanted input? Um, looking at a timeline about the listening sessions, um, has the committee thought about in the next couple of months? Wait till after this, you know, we're towards the end of the school year? I'd just like to know what you've kind of discussed, if, if at all.
So maybe I can help out a little bit about that. We did discuss that in the executive team. And based on some of the comments that, um, Commissioner Luganbill made in terms of listening sessions, um, we charted out a plan very similar to what this referendum listening sessions looked like, uh, but more targeted toward the areas that would be affected, uh, if boundary changes were made. Um, I think the board would have to direct us in terms of your timeline. And then we could, uh, create that schedule of activities and things that you would want to do, uh, to get input from the public.
Commissioner Harker?
I would ask again about a kind of a workback schedule from the proposed timeframe that, that you talked about. Um, I think it was current seventh graders, next year's eighth graders. And if we were to kind of work backwards from what needs to happen last to the listening sessions, that might help us provide that guidance.
Well, I think one of the things that will be important, um, in creating that plan is to have a target date of when you would have, um, a committee report on the feedback that you've gotten and some summary data. And then the following meeting to make that decision. And, and once we have those two dates, we can work back very easily.
So a target date. I mean, that's like-
I just want to mention that we, what we heard from both transportation and principals was that, um, you know, ideally, they would know in September if that, if you were going to do it the following September so that they have a full year to give that message. And, and, um, you know, so when I hear you talk about listening sessions, I think what you need to decide is if you, if you- you need to decide is if you, if you, if, if, I guess I envisioned the listening sessions helping you to create the transition plan, not necessarily deciding if you're going to make a boundary change or not. And so, you know, that would give you, you know, some breathing room that you, you know, in the fall with regular PTO meetings, you can maybe do some neighborhood things over the summer, but you would have that kind of natural, they're back to school and they're all organized again. Um, but what we heard was, we would like a year, you know, so if, if the change, if the kids are gonna hit in the fall of 2018, we're going to essentially know that that's going to happen, um, you know, next fall.
The fall of 2017.
Yeah. Um, and just one reassuring thing I, I didn't share, that was one of my, probably my favorite comment of the whole, uh, three committees that we, sessions that we had, was, um, Mandy Van Vliet asked her staff to do just a quick informal survey and they surveyed about half of the students at Sherman, um, on what high school they were going to and they didn't check their accuracy, but by self-reporting approximately 41% of the students surveyed could tell you if they're going to North Memorial, which means almost 60% didn't even know. And they included answers such as, "I'm going to be an eagle or a duck," so.
Commissioner Fager?
Um, I, I concur with the comment that, that Wendy just made with regard to listening sessions. My understanding would be listening sessions were about how to transition, not on whether to make the boundary changes. I think we, we've sought that feedback, we've used the demographic data to make good decisions about where boundary shift should, should occur. Uh, that, that has been discussed and talked about and analyzed and evaluated and referenced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for five, six years. I, I think time now is for action and the listening sessions are on what's the best way to help children transition in a way that they will feel not disenfranchised and that they will feel set up for success. That is, is really truly what my understanding about, uh, listening sessions is, not listening about whether we should do this boundary change. We've made that decision, we've made that recommendation as a committee. It's about how to help, how to help children feel engaged.
Does anyone, any board member want to discuss then moving this to, uh, a vote? Commissioner Harker?
Well, I just, I definitely agree that it should be staged and there should be a stage of approval of X and then some details about X that would come later and maybe multiple stages of details of it that come later, I don't know. I think the real question is what is X and what, if we were going to put it to vote tonight, what exactly are we voting on and what aren't we voting on?
We won't put it tonight.
Okay.
I'm talking about putting it on the agenda for a vote-
For a vote.
-and then work on the transition.
And so, that would be my question about-
That's the order.
About what are we, making sure that once we, if we are putting it on an, an agenda for a vote, that we're very clear at that time what we're voting on, I think so.
Commissioner Duhleks?
Well, I was just going to say, we, we can limit that discussion to transitioning if we take a vote first. So, uh, as soon as possible, I think we should vote on it.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, and I would think we could probably mirror maybe the calendar, the, the timeline process that we utilize for the referendum, uh, pieces. We approved the whole timeline, um, as we approved the proposal itself, so I, and I think having those listening sessions built in as like the first step of that timeline, I think will be, um, crucial.
As far as the vote and then, and include the timeline in the vote.
Right. I'm saying in the proposal that we would approve, to have the first thing as part of that, as part of it moving forward would be listening sessions-
Yep.
-um, over the summer, um, so that people can ask their questions, um, hear from us directly, um, and that we have transparency.
Thank you. Commissioner Harker?
I guess, again, I would just wanna know, are we trying to, there are some things we're, we're trying to, to sort of set in stone with that initial vote and whereas there are some other things we're gonna leave sort of loose. And I don't know how much we can do to clarify what's, what's fixed versus what's loose. What's, why are we listening? Presumably because there's still some things that are up for discussion and there are some things that aren't and are, can we be as clear, how crisp can we be about which is which?
Commissioner Fager first.
Uh, so, so my understanding is that we would take a vote first on whether to engage in this redistrict process and if then, and then, uh, after that point, have listening sessions to talk about how the transition should go about. That, that's my understanding and that would be my preference.
I, I, Commissioner Luganville?
Yeah, I, I think that's what I'm understanding too. So, I, I think we will, we will take it to the vote and the, and the, the vote would be the recommendation from committee and then from there, we would set up the transition and what that would look like. But I would like that all in place before we take the vote, as far as what we are doing exactly for transition, so there's no, there, there aren't, there aren't questions or not lots of questions, that they know exactly what we're going to do. Right? Commissioner Luganville?
And I would say in terms of structuring how the vote would go, I would split, I would, I would make sure that the motion includes the proposal itself and then the, um, the year in which it would take effect, just like what we saw, but so that it, um, it could be two separate motions, similar to what we've done with other proposals where it takes effect, but we move on making it happen first and then we move on when it takes effect. That could be a, just a suggestion of how we split up the motion.
That could be part of the discussion. Anyone else? No? Is that it? Okay. Thanks, everyone. Good discussion.
Community?
Now.
And student reps.
Right. What I'd like to say about that is we will take, um, questions and clarifications from those in the audience, um, but not debate what was presented tonight, but really to clarify if anybody needs clarification and then anybody who has questions. So, um, anybody from the audience want to come forward? Hearing none or seeing none? I think I will, okay. Thank you. Please state your name, use the microphone. Thank you very much.
My name is Jill Robidick and I live at 2202 Wensong Court. Um, I guess my question just is truly, how much, um, did you provide information to those in the affected area? Because I don't feel that until this information came out, um, in the media, that I had any awareness that this was, was going on. Um, and when you start talking about no listening sessions and we'll just take a vote, it very much concerns me that there hasn't been a fair, um, and equal voice from all sides, especially those in the affected area. Those that I'm here with tonight very strongly feel that way and I'd like to know what, what was the process for getting people on this committee because I do feel like it's very one-sided.
Thank you for that. Do you wanna explain, Joe, how we put the committee together?
I, I guess I can speak to the committee piece, um, and then someone else can talk about listening sessions. And I don't think we've really necessarily, I mean, we haven't voted on anything, so we haven't planned out what that looks, um, the, the, the committee, um, it had a much smaller roster of members, uh, two, a year and a half, two years ago, and so we put out, uh, requests to, um, different civic groups in town and then we sent out to all of the parents in the district to apply to sit on the committee. Um, and so we appointed a roster of a bunch of parents, um, primarily parents, um, and some business peoples, uh, all sorts of different backgrounds, but, uh, I think almost every committee member that we appointed this last go-around is a parent with current children in the district from different sides of town, different grade levels. Um, we tried to split it up that way. So, I, I mean, I, I hope that answers that question of what the makeup of the committee is. I don't, and in terms of-
Yeah, that was good. I mean, we had 40 applicants that did put their names in and we, um, went through and tried to make it as even and as representative as possible. It, we were, we were astonished at how many people volunteered. It was a really nice amount of people that volunteered, so that's how the committee was chosen, okay? As far as listening sessions go, um, you know, we're, we're not making decisions tonight. We're gonna really think about too what was presented, so, um, I don't want anybody to feel like we don't want their input. I mean, we do. And so, um, that's that disenfranchised piece as far as, uh, as a board, we don't want people to feel that way. So, I think we need to discuss a little bit on how we're gonna do that, okay?
Um, so the, the board has a parent advisory council, which has two parent members from each school, um, and, and Dr. Hardemack did mention that the parent advisory council, um, did hear the presentation first and so, as representatives of the schools, they're, they were there, um, two weeks ago and actually there was a significant number of people from the community, I'm not sure, you know, um, that's not usually how that committee operates, but there was a lot of community members there to hear it, um, two weeks ago as well. Um, so that the official parent sounding body did have an opportunity to, to vet it. Um, and then as you're planning, um, listening sessions, I would say that, um, not just the kids that are moving, but that you have some listening sessions, um, with all affected sides of town because, um, you know, there's been a disparity for a number of years. And I know that I am from North, but I was looking at my list and I actually think that more of the committee members are, are from, um, schools on the South side. Um, so there, there is a lot of voices on our committee, but also it was vetted through PAC.
That's a good suggestion. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna move on then to our equity, um, committee report and the Equity Review Committee recommendations with Josh and-
Josh Sterling.
Josh Sterling.
He's the chair.
He's the chair of the committee. Catherine Duhleks sat on the committee as a board.
Am I on? All right.
You're on, Josh. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to serve on this committee. Um, and secondly, I wanted to, uh, start out by saying something that you are all probably very much aware of. We're extremely lucky with the community that we have. Um, they're a very passionate parenting community for their kids that are in our school district. They work very, very, very hard to raise money for the programs in the schools and the extracurricular, uh, activities that their kids do. Um, so I, I think that as, um, as a, as community members, we owe a big thanks back to ourselves and have a pat on the back of some of the parent members, um, of these groups and all that they do, uh, 'cause it really is a kind of a tireless and thankless job at times. But to start out, um, our committee was tasked with, um, looking at donations, strictly donations that were given to the school. Um, we were given three main questions. Uh, the first one was, are there inequities in the Oak Clary School District with regard to donations and if so, what are they? Two, what is the role of the school district in terms of accepting donations and management of donations? And three, what suggestions does the committee have for the Oak Clary Public Schools Foundation related to issues of equity? I'll break those down and I'll just present the questions and then the recommendations we have with that. Um, and I won't bother reading everything to you on here since I think a lot of this is some information that you do already know as a board. So, the first question, are there inequities in the Oak Clary School District with regard to donations and if so, what are they? Recommendation, based on the data below, along with conversations with district staff about reporting of the donations, we find that there are no inequities in the Oak Clary School District with regards to donations. The way we kinda did that is we broke it down by, um, level, high school, middle school and elementary school. And since as we've kind of just been fully briefed on, there are various levels of enrollment at each one of those schools. So, you can't just take a whole number that's given to a school and compare it to another school because that, that, that's not apples to apples. So, you have to break it down to a per-student number. Uh, so when we did that on the high school level, what we came out with is that there's a difference of $2.58 being spent per student between Memorial and North. Now, we felt that $2.58 was not a big enough disparity, uh, or inequity of any kind on that level. When we looked at the middle schools, uh, there's a difference of $7.91 being spent per student between the highest middle school group of donations and the lowest group of donations.
Could I just ask, is this-
Yes, sir.
-per year and also, this is $7 against what figure?
What it is, um, these are looking at, um, enrollments based off of the school years, uh, 2013, 14, um, and 2015 and 16.
Sorry, I meant the base dollar figure. It's $7 more than what?
Yeah. What, what it is, we took, we took the full number of donations that were given during those bases of years, we divided that out per the population of students in each school. And then with North, what it comes out to being is that, um, 60 or, at, at North, at 60, or, at Memorial, it's $62.29 being spent per student there and $58.71 spent, cents being spent per student at North, which just comes down to that $2.58. Um, we did the same thing for, uh, for DeLong, North Star and, uh, South. Uh, we came out for them, uh, breaks down to being, uh, 1264 being spent at North Star per student, 604 at DeLong and 473 at South. Um, I'm not gonna go through the list of all those elementary schools that are on there. I'm gonna skip right down, um, to the bottom part of that. Um, when we're comparing the highest school, which happened to be Longfellow on there, per student at 8319 to the smallest of Mans being $1.67, it comes out to be a difference of $81.52 being spent per student between the elementary school at the highest amounts of donations and the lowest amounts of donations. Now, here's the thing, the committee feels that these numbers are not an accurate reflection of true dollars spent per student due to special projects, um, such as things like the Montessori playground. I know those parents, um, spent several years raising that money, but then what happens is when they build the playground, all that money gets given at once, so it looks like, oh, there's $40,000 given, uh, to this school. When those playgrounds are more of community features, they're, they're there to help us invite communities to be at our playgrounds and do those things. So, that's not an accurate representation, some of that stuff. You can also look at things like the puddle jump. Um, that's something that Longfellow, uh, puts on and it raises the, the bulk of their money for the year from donations. So, again, it's one fundraiser that brought in some things, um, that kind of skews that. Now, here's the other part of that, um, is that, um, we also feel there is inaccurate reporting of donations at some schools on the middle school level. Now, um, really what that is, is just more of some of the staff, um, they're not all reporting it the same way. So, a little more consistency with that, um, would help solve that. Uh, but again, when talking with, uh, members of these schools and people that are there, they don't see a diff, they, they're not saying there's a huge difference of, of something between the two schools. Um, so we, that's why we feel that dollar number is just a little bit deceiving. So, second, what role or what is the role of the school district in terms of accepting donations and management of those donations? Well, we have two recommendations on that, um, and a couple of suggestions. So, the first recommendation is that the Oak Clary School District should accept all donations in accordance with current District Policy 840. Uh, the district staff should document these donations in accordance with current district policy and the district should remind all staff of the responsibilities in that documentation process. I won't bore you by reading that policy there, um, but we feel that's an important thing. Our second recommendation, as a committee, we recognize that external funding, excluding state and federal funding, not be utilized to secure certified, classified and non-affiliated staff without superintendent approval. Those are our recommendations for that one. We had a couple of suggestions to go with that as well, though we wanted you guys just to kinda keep in mind. Um, our first suggestion was just that the committee strongly suggests the district continue to foster parent involvement with PTA, PTO, FACs, um, booster clubs, all those parent-driven kind of organizations that help raise money. Um, along with parent involvement, we suggest that these schools have a member of the school staff working with them to ensure the goals align with the district goals and the strategic plan, as well as to kinda help with that documentation process. Um, so there is, aren't little surprises that show up down the road. Uh, the other suggestion we had was that the district should review all donations given to each school and comparisons should be done to make sure that inequities do not develop over time because that's something that could happen, uh, down the road. Um, we feel it should be done on a, on a two-tiered level here. Uh, high school and middle school comparisons should be done on a three-year rolling average. They don't have as many large special projects or, um, one-time large donations like the elementary schools do and those fundraising things that they do. Um, that's how we felt the three-year rolling average was good. And then the elementary schools on a five-year rolling average. Uh, that helps average out a little bit more of those special projects when they come in as a bulk, um, deposit into, in those things. Um, again, as a committee, we cannot emphasize enough the importance of keeping detailed records of the donations and the importance of accurate records. Um, and, and, uh, the early days of our committee, we were still getting all the raw numbers and, and we were kinda finding out that not everything was being reported consistently at every school on the same level. So, again, that, that really will help you guys in your job going forward as well. The final question, what suggestion does the committee have for the Oak Clary Public Schools Foundation related to issues of, uh, equity? Well, our recommendation for that was that the committee recommends that any undesignated donations that come into the Oak Clary School District should be processed through the Oak Clary Public Schools Foundation. Now, again, we realize there's not a large amount of those donations that are given, um, but I think that it's a good policy to adhere to just in case something like that were to ever happen. Um, again, we strongly suggest that, uh, the foundation and the district do as much as possible to promote district needs. Uh, we also suggest that schools be encouraged to apply for grant support through the Oak Clary Public Schools Foundation and other grant sources, making- Clare Public Schools Foundation and other grant sources, making school district needs known to the public as a must. And I can even tell you that even some of the members on our committee were, what's the Oak Clare Public Schools Foundation? What does that do? You know, people were asking, well, how did somebody find out that a school needed something? I think we can even look as recently as that community member that paid off all the past due lunch balances. How did that community member find out about that? It wasn't because it was posted somewhere or they read it, it was because their kid came home and told them and they thought, well, nobody should have to go through this kind of stuff. So again, I think there are some levels of promotion that the Oak Clare Public Schools Foundation could do to make the community just more aware of what they're here for. And then also, just to make sure that we're always keeping in front of the community the needs that the school does have. But don't forget to thank them as well for what they do already accomplish, because they're out there working really hard. And again, we want to keep those parents doing that stuff, because we could not be here without them. So that's my report. Hopefully, that's made it a little easier and quick closeout for tonight for you guys.
Thanks, Josh. Such a true statement about parents. Any board members have any questions? Commissioner Luganbill?
Well, thank you so much for all of your work and to everyone who served on that committee. I was so happy that we had so many people who applied for it. That was great. And I hope that we can use the equity committee framework to explore other equity issues down the road. I think the big thing with this is there are so many great just facts in this document that we need to get out there. You know, especially the difference in donations. We need to get that number out there everywhere we can to, you know, just spell what the myths out there that have been perpetuated for years about donations between the two schools. So thank you for your fact-finding and your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duhax?
Well, I didn't want to jump in if you had other questions about it, but I want to thank Josh for his hard work and the work of the committee, and also Scott Knofke, who was our staff member that helped us so much with all the reports and the numbers. But that's, this committee uncovered the fact that not everything is being reported, and that was really a shock. So it was also a shock to know that the parents are out there and the booster clubs and everybody that works for their kids. We don't want to discourage donations by saying, well, you can only do this, or you can't do that. But we were trying to be particularly positive about the work of the parents and the families that support the kids. And so, thanks so much, Josh. And I think we're on the right track with this.
Good. You know, to point out a good example of good partnership across the school districts is the graduation party night. Both Memorial and North get together and they raise the funds together, and then they split it per student out. We found that there was a lot of partnership between some of the schools. So again, we're one district, so.
I think that story, after we're talking about boundaries tonight, and we talk about our high schools, but that story is an amazing one, because they are one high school for graduation, which is pretty special and have been doing that for a very long time.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Josh. Are there any questions or clarification from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go on to the 2017-18 Employee Handbook Modifications. Thanks, Kay.
You're welcome.
I noticed there was a lot of wording, or you have to explain why that wording had to be changed, right?
Well, so, yeah, I think Patty's going to pull it up so everybody can see it.
Good.
Yeah, thanks. So just as a little background, because I know that sometimes there's different people in the audience, and we have a new board member. The process that the district uses to modify handbook, or employee handbook language, we do this on an annual basis. And the Employee Relations Committee meets to review proposed changes. And we came to the board earlier this year with the majority of the changes for the handbook, and that had to do more so with the compensation, the compensation study modification. So this year's a little unique in that we're coming twice. And then there was also information requested of the ERC by the Policy and Governance Committee of things to look at, and that work is still yet to come. So I would anticipate, as I indicated in the executive report for this, or this committee report, was that we'll probably come back again in the fall with some more recommendations based upon the work of the ERC between now and then. So the information that was shared with you regarding the modifications before us, the majority of them really all have to do with the same component, and that's what's up there right now. So this is adding the words for all of our early retirement language to indicate that the employee becomes eligible for Medicare, that that's when this benefit goes until, not until their normal Medicare age. This isn't a change in anything we've been doing. We've always been doing it until they become eligible for Medicare, because not, that doesn't happen at the same point in time for everybody, depending on personal situations and circumstances. So we've always been treating everyone as the benefit became eligible to them once they met that age, but we've had to change that language in here numerous times. So that's the majority of the language changes you're going to see tonight. So that was the first one. And then the second one should be in, thank you Patty, because you're just going through. Yes. So the elementary school principals, this was language that needed to be taken out based upon the compensation changes, and then changing the elementary principal contract to the 260 days. So on this page, we just certainly, or simply modified that and moved them up into the position that they belonged in. And number six, taking out the head of instruction under Part Five, because head instruction became a principal position under all the new compensation work.
We clarified that was McKinley changing to a principal.
Yes.
So that's the difference there.
So again, this is the same Medicare language that we've talked about from the other sections. Part Five, we needed to remove, the committee is going to study this line, because it was studied, and I think we just simply missed that the last time around. Then you can see the two changes for the Medicare language. Section Eight is also the Medicare language. And then the very final one is removing compensation out of the handbook, because it actually states, oh, sorry, I missed the Group Five and Group Six. There was a group of employees that were misplaced in the handbook under this, under these couple of pages, so we simply moved them to where they belong in Group Six. They've always been treated as if they were in Group Six, so nothing changed. This is just really just cleanup language. And then Patty, if you can go down to the last one. Oh, one more. There you go. The substitute employees. So in this one, it's taking out the actual wages, because every time that changes, then we have to go back and have a handbook modification. And all of this is listed along with the compensation language. So we didn't need to have it in two places, one which needed to be revised annually. So that's it. Any questions on the modifications?
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I think that's it. Thanks, Kay.
Thank you.
Any clarification or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we're going to a quick marathon reading of policies here. So the first one on the docket is the discussion, possible first reading of Policy 366, the School Counseling Program. The last time this was looked at is 1999 and needed some updating, so we're going to read it through. Yeah, go ahead, Joe. Is that okay if Joe reads them quick, since we worked out?
I've seen people have questions before.
Or do people like to read them? Kathryn, you like to read them too, so.
Yeah, I just, we might go to sleep if you read too long.
So Joe, you start, Kathryn, and then Jennifer, and then we'll see if you or anyone to do anything.
School Counseling Program. The school district shall maintain a school counseling program which will serve all students to help them with academic, personal, social, emotional, and career development. A comprehensive and sequential program of developmentally-based guidance and counseling services shall be maintained in grades kindergarten through 12 in the district. For information on pre-K programming, see reference below. The broad program components shall include a school counseling curriculum, individual student planning services, responsive services, and system support services, planned opportunities for professional development, consultation, and collaboration. School counseling services shall be planned and provided by district counselors in conjunction with supervising administrators and other licensed staff. Staff members involved in planning these services shall involve and seek the input of students, parents, and guardians, and other community members or entities as appropriate, whose perspectives and insights will help to improve the district's programs and services. The general goals and functions of the district's School District Counseling Program shall be to assist academic development and planning, including the following. Standard A, assist students to acquire the attitudes, knowledge, and skills that contribute to successful learning in school and across the lifespan. Standard B, assist students to develop the academic skills and attitudes necessary to make effective transitions from elementary to middle school, from middle school to high school, and from high school to a wide range of post-secondary options. Standard C, assist students to understand how their academic experiences prepare them to be successful in the world of work, in their interpersonal relationships, and in the community. Does anyone else want to come in? Add two. Okay. Personal, social, emotional development, including the following. Standard D, assist students to acquire the knowledge, attitudes, and interpersonal skills to understand themselves and to appreciate the diverse backgrounds and experiences of others. Standard E, assist students to demonstrate effective decision-making, problem-solving, and goal-setting skills. Standard F, assist students to understand and to use safety and wellness skills. Three, career development and planning, including the following. Standard G, assist students to acquire the self-knowledge necessary to make informed career decisions. Standard H, assist students to understand the relationship between educational achievement and career development. Standard I, assist students to employ career management strategies to achieve future career success and satisfaction. And then at the bottom, we add to our nondiscrimination statement immigration status, or sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody have any questions? Clarifications? No? Anybody from the audience? Seeing none, we're going to have Kathryn go on to the next one. We are going to have the first reading of new policy 411.4, ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care/foster care. This is a new policy needed with Wisconsin statutes, so we got.
Ready?
Yep.
The Oak Clare Area School District shall collaborate with the Area, County, and Tribal Child Welfare Agency in ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care/foster care. Foster care refers to 24-hour substitute care for children placed away from their parents and guardians, and for whom the Child Welfare Agency has placement and care responsibility. This includes, but is not limited to, placement in foster family homes, foster homes of relatives, group homes, emergency shelters, residential facilities, childcare institutions, and pre-adoptive homes. To the extent required under applicable law, a child in foster care under this policy also includes children who, an appropriate child welfare agency indicates, are awaiting a foster care placement. Children in foster care shall have equal access to the same free, appropriate public education as provided to other children in the district. They shall be provided the services and have access to the programs and activities that are offered to other children attending the district schools, including educational services for which the children meet eligibility criteria, that is, special education. Title I programming, programs and services for English learners, gifted and talented program, et cetera. Career and technical education programs, and school nutrition programs. Let me go down. The Director of Student Services has primary administrative level oversight of the district's services for children who are in foster care. He, she, or a qualified administrative level designee shall be responsible for, one, providing any required assurances to applicable state and federal agencies that the district is complying with, applicable state and federal requirements related to ensuring the educational stability of children in foster care. And, two, reasonably monitoring compliance with such assurances. The Director of Student Services shall serve as the district's primary point of contact for the education of children in foster care, and be the primary liaison for the representatives of child welfare agencies, who also have responsibility for ensuring the educational stability of children in foster care. The Director of Student Services shall work with administrators and other district personnel to periodically review existing policies, procedures, practices, and data to identify and develop proposals to remedy and remove barriers that children in foster care may face in the school enrollment and admission processes, in regularly attending school, in accessing applicable support services, in accessing academic programs, academic activities, or extracurricular activities, or in receiving appropriate credit for prior academic work.
Thank you, Commissioner Duhax. Are there any questions on the part of the board? Seeing none, are there any questions? Clarifications as part of our dwindling audience? Seeing none, we will go on then to the discussion and possible reading of Policy 425, Education of Homeless Children and Youth. We're updating a 2005 policy. Okay, go ahead, Jennifer. Thank you.
Just the yellow part?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
They shall be, so, what is the policy?
Homeless children and youth.
They shall be provided the services and have access to programs and activities that are offered to other children attending district schools, including transportation services, educational services for which the children/youths meet eligibility criteria, e.g., special education, Title I programming, programs, and services for English learners, gifted and talented programming, career and technical education programs, and school nutrition programs. No homeless child or youth shall be required to attend separate school or program for homeless children and shall not be stigmatized by school personnel. You have to scroll down, Patty, because Jim's in the way.
That's okay, Jim.
The term includes, but is not limited to, children and unaccompanied youth who are sharing the housing or other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reason, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or campgrounds due to lack of alternative adequate accommodations, living in emergency or transitional shelters, or living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, bus stations, or similar settings. The Director of Student Services has primary administrative level oversight of the district's services for homeless children and youth. He, she, or a qualified administrative level designee shall be responsible for, one, providing any required assurances to applicable state and federal agencies that the district is complying with, applicable state and federal requirements related to the education of homeless children and youth, and, two, reasonably monitoring compliance with such assurances. The homeless coordinator shall serve as the district's liaison for homeless children and youth. The district's homeless coordinator will work with administrators and other district personnel to periodically review existing policies, procedures, practices, and data to identify and develop proposals to remedy and remove barriers that homeless children and youth may face in the school enrollment and admission process, in regularly attending school, in accessing applicable support services, academic programs, academic activities, or extracurricular activities, or in receiving appropriate credit for prior academic work.
Thank you, Commissioner Fager. We have a question from Commissioner Duhax.
I just wondered, a lot of people live in trailer parks, and that's not considered a homeless place, just like an apartment or a house are not considered homeless. I mean, why name trailer parks?
Do you feel it needs to be defined more? I might take trailer parks as being in a campground, but I see what you're saying.
There's lots of people that live in trailer parks. That's not, it's not synonymous with being homeless.
Right. Commissioner Luganbill?
This was, that was the recommended definition under the state example, to align us with statute and federal policy, but we can take it out if we want. I actually, I mean, I honestly think that if you put living in motels, hotels, or campgrounds, you know, that pretty much covers, you know, because if somebody is staying in a temporary trailer park, it's in a campground. So I think we can take out trailer parks.
I would suggest doing that, because lots of families live in trailer parks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I could see living in a motel, but most people don't do that. Hotels, campgrounds, you know, that are temporary, but trailer parks are pretty permanent.
So if we cross that out, or is the board, did you have something else? If we cross that off, is the board okay with moving that on? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yep? Anybody from the audience, input? Seeing none, we can move on to the next, which is policy, first reading of policy 347. We're updating it from 2006. Aaron, Commissioner Harder, you want to do this one? Thank you.
Student records shall be maintained.
Student records shall be maintained in the interest of the student to assist school personnel in providing appropriate educational experience for each student in the district. The superintendent shall have primary responsibility for ensuring that district employees and other school officials who are authorized to create, collect, maintain, use, provide access to, or destroy student records, understand their duties and responsibilities as defined by applicable law, school board policy, and district procedures, including the specific confidentiality and maintenance requirements applicable to various categories of student records, and other personally identifiable records concerning students. It is essential for all district officials, employees, and agents to understand that the legal requirements and the district expectations surrounding the confidentiality of protected student records, including limitations on disclosure of certain records and information, generally apply not only to the actual records in whatever form, but also to any verbal exchanges which improperly disclose the content of confidential records. Student record notices shall be published annually in accordance with state and federal law.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, any questions or clarifications from the audience? Seeing none, we can head on to the next one, which is the discussion and possible first reading of... Yeah, student records. Student directory data. This is a new policy in light of the increased request from alternate schools wanting to get names in order to advertise for alternate or private education using the voucher piece. So that's why this is here. So Eric, do you want to read this one?
Yes.
Okay.
In accordance with the district's designation and written notice of student directory data, the district may disclose the student's directory data to any person unless the student's parent or guardian, or adult student, if applicable, has notified the district in writing that any and any or all of the student's directory data shall not be disclosed. If an appropriate party exercises a valid opt-out under this policy, then the district shall not disclose the directory data covered by the opt-out decision unless, one, an appropriate party provides advanced written consent for the disclosure, or, two, the district determines that there is a separate and otherwise applicable exception to the confidentiality of the records that permits or requires such disclosure. The district designates the following data elements from student records as directory data. Student's name, recorded images of the student that are not being maintained by the district for a separate purpose as a behavioral record; student's school grade level, degrees and awards received by the student; student's participation in officially recognized activities and sports; weight and height of members of athletic teams; the name of the school most recently previously attended by the student; student's dates of attendance, not including daily attendance records. The district's designation and use of directory data is further defined and limited as follows. One, pursuant to a state law requirement unless the student's parent or guardian, or adult student, has notified the district of his/her objection to such disclosure for the student's directory data, the district shall, upon request, provide any representative of a law enforcement agency, city attorney, district attorney, or corporation counsel, county department, under decision forty-six point two fifteen, point six to twenty... Forty-six point twenty-two, or forty-six point twenty-three, a court of record, or municipal court, with such directory data information relating to any such student enrolled in the school district for the purpose of enforcing that student's school attendance, to respond to a health or safety emergency, or to aid in an investigation of alleged criminal or delinquent activity by a student enrolled in the district. Although a student's address and telephone number are not designated as student directory data under this district policy, the district is nonetheless required by law to release a high school student's name, home address, and telephone number to military recruiters and institutions of higher education upon their request, unless the student or the student's parent or guardian, as applicable, has notified the district that such information shall not be released without prior written consent. The district shall notify adult students and parents and guardians of high school students under the age of eighteen of their right to opt out of such disclosures. Requests for student contact information under this paragraph include requests from any technical college district for the contact information of students who may be graduating from high school in the current school year.
Sorry, Commissioner Torres, you've got a long one.
It's going down. Upon a student's initial enrollment and registration in the district, upon the re-enrollment following a gap in enrollment, and annually thereafter for continuing students, the district shall provide parents, guardians, and adult students with notice of the district's designation of student directory data, opt-out rights, and opt-out procedures. The notice shall be provided via publication in the parent's student handbook and directory, the district's back-to-school newsletter, and shall also be made available through the district website. Parents and guardians of students who are newly enrolled or re-enrolling after a gap in enrollment, or an enrolling or re-enrolling adult student, if applicable, shall be provided with a copy of the district's directory data notice, and shall have fourteen days to inform the school in writing that all or any part of the student's directory data may not be released without prior consent. During any such fourteen-day period, the district shall avoid the release of student directory data under this policy. Annually, the district also administers a fourteen-day nondisclosure period coinciding with the beginning of each school year. During this annual period, the parent or guardian of a continuing student, or an adult continuing student, may make or adjust directory data opt-out decisions. Regarding decisions to opt out from the school's disclosure of all or any part of the directory data under this policy, one, using procedures established by the administration, a parent or guardian, or adult student, if applicable, may make, modify, or withdraw an opt-out decision regarding directory data at any time, but should allow for a reasonable period of time for such a decision to be processed, unless the district issues notice to a parent, guardian, or adult student stating that a new opt-out decision is required, in which case, a fourteen-day nondisclosure period shall again apply. An opt-out decision from the disclosure of directory data under this policy shall remain in effect until it is modified or withdrawn by an appropriate party.
Thank you, Commissioner Torres. Any questions or clarifications from the board? Seeing none, any from the audience? Then we'll move on to the next one, which is the discussion, possible first reading of policy three eleven, Academic Freedom. I'll take that one. So academic freedom is essential to the purpose of our school district, and shall continue to be upheld by the school board. Educators shall be protected from unreasonable restraint when presenting information and ideas that aid in student growth. The education of youth in a democratic society requires that students have the opportunity to learn from a variety of sources and viewpoints. By studying multiple perspectives, students learn to formulate and express their own views. To that end, the educator maintains discretion in selecting materials and methods so long as the materials support the district curriculum for the course, and methods reflect best practices and instruction. To support all learners, educators have the independence to respond to classroom questions, and shall promote objectivity, and clearly delineate between factual evidence and their own opinions. Academic freedom must be exercised within the ethical responsibilities of the teaching profession. These responsibilities are reflected in the following procedures. Principals shall ensure that the district curricula are followed. Educators shall notify the principal prior to instruction of lesson plans that include topics which are controversial relative to community norms. When controversial topics arise spontaneously in the classroom, educators shall inform the principal of such an occurrence in a timely manner. Discussion of controversial issues shall always take into consideration a concern for the welfare, growth, and development of the whole child. And this was an update of a policy that we had since nineteen eighty-five. I know. So I'm really glad I got to read that one. Okay. The next one, any questions from the board? Any from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to the discussion and possible reading of policy three thirty, Curriculum Development and Evaluation, and Joe, your backup.
The Department of Teaching and Learning, as directed by the superintendent, facilitates the development, evaluation, and communication of a guaranteed and viable pre-K through twelve curriculum based on school board-adopted standards. In order to provide equitable learning experiences for all students, district administrators and principals shall assure the curriculum is delivered at all grade levels in the district. Curriculum development and evaluation shall include the study of academic research, recommendations by experts in the field, and research-based instructional strategies with materials and resources that support culturally responsive practices. Communication of the curriculum and the evaluation of its effectiveness is a responsibility of educators and the Department of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan Bell. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will go to the last one, and this is an update, policy three eighty-one. It's an update of a nineteen eighty-five policy as well, Teaching About Controversial Issues. Commissioner Duax, can we just go back on the same order? Is that okay? Sorry. Yeah, I think there's a lot of crossouts, so just... Yeah, go ahead.
Educators in the Eau Claire Area School District are required to adhere to establish scope and sequence documents, curriculum guides, and school board directives relative to course content. Within that framework, presentation of factual materials related to opposing sides of controversial issues of local, state, national, and international importance has a valuable role in the overall instructional program. A controversial issue is one in which there are well-known opposing views that are likely to elicit support and opposition by the school and community. The school board supports the addition of controversial issues in the instructional program, provided the following criteria are met. One, the issue is related to the learning targets for the curriculum. Two, the issue is developmentally appropriate for the curriculum. Three, the instruction shall promote information, concepts, or strategies that are peer-reviewed by accredited organizations, for example, National Institutes of Health, National Academy of Sciences, Journal of Psychology, New England Journal of Medicine, Modern Language Association, American Psychological Association, American Academy of Political and Social Sciences, Journal of Early Childhood Research, et cetera, and that are research and evidence-based. Number four, the instruction encourages an open debate premised on inquiry. Number five, the educator shall delineate between factual... That's a wrong word, I think. Factual something does not... I think we left a word out. Factual something does not express his or her personal opinion. What do you think that is? Okay, maybe you need to check on that, what that is. Yeah. Next paragraph, "A controversial issue may be brought to the classroom by educators or students. The addition of the controversial issue shall be aligned with instruction and shall not be disruptive to the educational environment." Principal approval is required for the addition of a controversial issue into the curriculum in the following situations. One, someone who is not a member of the school requests that the controversial issue be addressed. Two, the controversial issue is not related to the learning targets of the curriculum. Parents/guardians have a right to be informed when controversial issues are presented in a course. The following procedures shall be followed to accommodate district families. One, when the addition of a controversial issue is pre-planned, that is not a teachable moment, parents/guardians shall be informed in advance regarding controversial issues discussed in courses, either in course outlines or by special notices, and shall be afforded the opportunity to withhold the student without penalty. Two, parents/guardians shall request in writing that their child be withheld from the discussion of a controversial issue. Three, requests from parents and guardians to view materials shall be honored. Four, if potentially objectionable concepts or language are present in materials, alternative selections must be made available to those who object to the content.
Thank you, Commissioner Duax. Any questions from the board? Clarifications? Any from the audience?
I have a quick question. So that... Do we reclarify that number five on the very beginning?
Can we go up and look at it? Yeah, can you?
I know the original... The original version sent before we met the policy governing, just said the instructor does not express his or her personal opinion. And if I recall that discussion, I think we were wondering whether or not that was something we actually would allow, but just to distinguish the fact from their opinion.
So it would say the educator shall delineate between factual information and their own personal opinion?
I thought that's...
Distinguish between...
Yeah.
Let's... Can we make that? Yeah. Joe will write it, and then we'll make sure that...
Can we go back up to...
The educator shall distinguish between factual information and his or her personal opinion.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah. I think that we didn't think it was impossible to...
I mean, to have the discussion.
Yeah.
Because that's more of a dialogue.
So I'll just read this once for the record, then?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
For number five. "The educator shall distinguish between factual information and his or her personal opinion."
That sounds like the discussion that we had, I think.
So if you may...
You're going to use the word distinguish instead of delineate?
Is that okay with the board? If we make those changes on number five and bring it for a vote next time, is that okay with the board? There. Thank you very much. Did I ask everybody for their opinion? Okay. Yeah. Now, that brings us to the part of our request for future agenda items, and I have a couple, but I don't know how to approach them. So if it's a report or whatever, I have a couple. One was the volunteers in the schools, and how... What's the procedure for that? I just get more and more questions for people who want to volunteer, and they want to increase, and they're specific to where they want to volunteer, and they don't always find that to be a way...
We can do that, and there's a process in HR where people apply, and Kay can report on that.
Okay. And then maybe that what we need to do then is make that more part of our community, get it out there so people know where it is. I'm sure we do it.
Do you think you want a written report first?
Partnership coordinators do it.
Do you think you want a written report first, and then...
No, do whatever easiest.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever's easiest. And then the other one I had was a lot... Reaching out to alumni, where we are on that process of our own alumni. I reflected on that as part of the referendum. I know we've been busy, so I haven't brought it up. So I was just wondering where that sits as far as connecting with our alumni and having a specific... What should I say? A distribution list or something, so we can be in connection with our alumni. Commissioner Logan Bell?
I don't have a request, but I just want to make sure the board knows about an event tomorrow night at the Chippewa Valley Museum at seven with Marv Lansing. It's about the history of Eau Claire schools. So it should be really fun. It's at seven o'clock tomorrow night at the Chippewa Valley Museum in the auditorium. It's organized through the School History Club, so it should be really interesting. He's a wealth of knowledge, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't be there. I have to get up early and drive to Madison for work, so I won't be there. I'm going to miss that one. Good. Does anybody want to move the closure of this meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Fager, second by Commissioner Logan Bell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Oppose, no?
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven one five eight three nine five zero six seven, or online at valleymediaworks.org.